We're going to start, I missed the October meeting, so I've got about a half hour slide show. My trip to Iowa on the train, it's really pretty boring.
Iowa's not boring.
No, the trip. No, Iowa wasn't boring. Yeah, I actually spent a day driving a tractor with a corn wagon behind the combine. Anyway, thanks everybody. December in particular is a really busy time of year. It's always really encouraging to me to see so many folks show up to these meetings. So I hear like a beep. Is that like a bomb or something? Okay, so kind of get ourselves going here. First thing, proxies. I think the only notice I got for a proxy was Jose is going to be proxy for Sally, right?
Right.
Okay. Are there any other proxy declarations that we kind of just missed on the email list?
Thank you. Make them all yours.
Okay, so if you have to leave, then okay, so one of them. You can't both because that's not what you meant. It's a good strategy, but maybe Susan?
Yeah. They can arm wrestle.
It's good to know. Anyway, you sound like you have a cold. Anybody else? Any other proxies that we know of? Okay, so everybody reviewed the collective memory? There wasn't a lot, was there? Anyway, okay. So anyway, that's a funding issue, so you'll get a collective memory when there's, you know, some budget to pay somebody to type it up. And likewise, there was not a, we're minutes from the last recreation committee for this same reason. I'm willing to donate my time for some things, but sitting there typing, you know, for a couple of hours is not what...
So what's the status of ongoing facilitation?
I could report on that. We're working hard to get that agreement done. We're combining the money from the Six Rivers and Chafftree together for an agreement. And that's causing us a little bit of challenge, but we have that done very soon.
So there's money available?
Yeah. Get the agreement executed. And everybody knows it's important and working hard on that, but it's not a real finish line quite yet.
Larry, so that coat that's sitting there is a coat that's been in this room for two weeks that has nobody associated with it. Nobody associated with it. Nobody associated with it. Anyway.
It looks like it'll fit.
Okay, so.
Five questions.
Yeah.
Somebody agreed, who's agreeing with?
The funding.
The coats would disagree with the RCD.
With the RCD?
And specifically for the facilitation. John?
Several weeks ago, last night we discussed the Huffman bill. We had a guest speaker here, did a good job. And I raised the issue of the need for expanding the buffers along Wild and Seen rivers. From what the Northwest Forest Plan calls for 300, Huffman bill goes out a quarter mile. And so I asked the question, what's the basis for the need or the justification for that? And he said, there's a study coming out for the fish. So my question to the collaborator, does anybody have any knowledge of that study that was referenced?
I don't. Have you seen anything? Has the forest seen anything yet?
Not yet.
So I guess the answer is not yet. Okay. But I will take the initiative to send John Driscoll an email about it and just kind of find out what the status is.
So it's going to be, while we're doing public comment, we're going to pass public fires out. So next Tuesday is the Living Wild Fire Workshop at the Public Library. So it's the Forest Council property extension. We're going to have, you know, Steve Quarles, who's kind of the guru on how to build fire safety homes.
Like the whole hardening side of things.
Kevin, Kegel's going to be there helping with insurance. He's back there, so we have a chance to go with him. I got a word on how to help your fire department and care, how to help firefighters and fire safety landscaping. So anyway, just if you need to pass the word along, that means it's a pretty thorough one. Or if you're trying to work, you know, if you have a season, if you're ready. Pass the word along, please.
Okay. So all their public observations, kind of we have the two different times, early and late in the meeting for public observations. So any public observation. At the moment, okay? Any time sensitive items, any items that didn't make it on the agenda that need to be addressed at this meeting? Because we can't wait until our next meeting, which I think typically will be in February. Okay. Any other public input? Okay, so the next agenda item, we'll have to, I think, delay because I don't see anybody from Six Rivers to introduce our forest supervisor Ted. And I don't know, Kelly, did you hear anything recently on whether he was making it or not?
I had an email in with Dan Dill, and I didn't hear back from him.
And how about Dan?
I hadn't heard anything from Montreux either.
Okay.
He was sick this morning. I told him to stay away.
Okay, yeah, probably a good thing for people to stay away from groups at Christmas time when you want to share your thoughts. Okay, so forest reissues, we kind of tried to kind of organize some of that warnings. And just because it's been such an incredibly active fire season, people are going to ask anyway. We might as well spend some time at beginning beach meeting, you know, on post-fire project updates, those extent of fires if that's appropriate, and where we're at on, where agencies are at on rehab kind of stuff. So because we usually end up making Jennifer wait to the end of the evening. So Jennifer, if you want to kind of give us your spin on what's happening on the BLM side?
Just thought you'd finally put it out before order. So I think most of you are aware, so for the Reading Field Office this year, we had a high level fire season. We started with the Clamathon fire pretty early on in the season up in Siskiyou County. That was about 15,000 acres on us. Then we were less than two to pick up the car fire, about 64,000 acres of BLM. And then we finished the fire season for us with 6,000 acres of campfire in paradise. So needless to say, my already paint style has been stretched very thin. On the car fire, we did complete a DSR document. We had a national bear team in and we completed a fire recap document, which included tree removal. Mostly had roadside hazard trees. So we have signed the new document for that and are working on the layout. Focusing basically on the things that we can get easily from the roadside since the most of the year that burned in the car fire for us were various seeds. And so it's hard to get to the trees off the earth anyway.
So out of curiosity, so if you were to kind of do a pie chart of what was kind of forest versus chapparrel?
I have the stats. I don't have them here, but most of the Reading Field Office, a lot of it was that kind of non-compine, lower elevation urban interface, you know, you picked up timber, county line road, and everything with the parks. And the stuff that burns on us that was timbered over by our OHB area, so like the Chappy Shast area, the west side of the dam. Most of that burnt in such a low severity that actually can take out a tree.
Okay.
So not a lot of kind of large scale standard business in fire, at least in timber. So we're working on that. We currently still only have our one forester in place. So he hired a term forester, so should be here for one year instead of closing four, they actually have the money. And forestry tech, hopefully those people will be in place half the first fifth of the year. So they need to bring them in from one of their areas. So we have two of our staff of three. So and then a lot of, for our staff, a lot of non-timber type of work. So hazard tree removal on trails, ton of culvert replacement, you know, small footprint replacements, you know, erosion stabilization, and stuff, archaeological site impact. So it's a huge lift for us. And basically what my staff is focused almost on, we can't get time on right now.
Questions for Jennifer, if anything in particular? John?
Is this some of your report, the general video?
This is probably the time to talk.
I got more to go.
Oh, wait, I want to steal your time. I was going to ask you about the control burn. Control burn, you were talking about that. Well, it's just that, I mean, you got lost in all the fire, but it was done over. It was after rain, so they called for a description. It was successful, I don't know how it aged, but you know, kind of overload these things. So I just.
We got thirteen. That was only because we are very near a, near a downtown property. So we have, we have to do quite a great, we have no more than 15 acres. And then we actually did do, had a couple of locals who were pre-20s or anything, so we rough fired the season again. Foresters helped us, but we ended up taking those coming in business on the face of the road. I think I need to, or I'm going to prescribe second hand to explain that we're doing and what happened and how we process. We don't have any fire season, we don't have any half.
Yeah, the conditions were, we had that rain, and then it was freezing, which is good for fire activity. Wanting to hit the fire moment and then disperse as possible. But I think one of the big competitors moving forward is going to be their quality. You know, they sort of, it's just a question of, do you want to have a wildfire scenario? Or do you want to have a more managed scenario to over? And I definitely pick the latter.
Yeah, we turned around, did everything, piled everything, just outside the terrace for the last three days. We kind of sustained the heat, but we can't believe you're going to help them. So just have to prepare this as well. Now all these fire guys are working on it. We don't have any, we're not functional. Sorry.
So how about car fire in Grasshopper Creek?
So. Yeah, so we did, well, we had some fire attacks in Grasshopper Creek. We had some, I think we had minimal dozer impacts. Grasshopper Creek, due to the fact that we basically have the whole team of forest supervisors. With the map that had been done, previously for the Grasshopper Creek, there's a map that said, you're going to have to count fire and foresters today. This is all we have, like we can't stay here. So I think that's almost all road damage. But we have pilot work, impacts obviously, we didn't send in there and then we got a moment to make change. Fired that, we got the dogs, we should have received. We can see what's successful, and we're going to turn that in. In Grasshopper Creek, it's requiring, and I can slow down. So we still have to dig. I just have a few, just up there on our staff, if you knew Tim Bradley, our target officer. He worked with Kevell, he took a job with the team. So his last people was.
You would be.
Carland Defense. So of that position is, it's several people that's doing it. Our ecologist had been there for a while, just by selection on that. There was a person or something in the office. So we all get all of our ecologists, or ecologists. Yeah, but a whole fleet of terms, starting with car fire. Archaeologists, foresters.
And so Ken, the gap, that creates at least a part, right? He was the lead on that Indian Creek, Green Creek.
Correct.
Forest Health Project, right? So that'll have to get restarted.
Yeah, we're still kind of EU in that, we still have journey. So we only have three fire staff in the office, Tiffany, Dawn, and Lisa, too. But they're still kind of chipping away at that. They have finished one of the units completely by the end.
Okay, anything else for Jennifer?
Just, I wanted to ask John, what did it look like after the control burn up there? What did it accomplish?
I haven't been able to see it.
Oh, yeah.
It was so, it was maintenance burning. So the unit that did was, you know, we had already treated and worked in there and were like basically trying to maintain that.
So was it one of the units that was commercially harvested treatment, you know?
I don't know.
I think it was best on the map that I remember seeing.
Yeah, so trying to stay ahead of not needing to go back and do another mechanic.
There was a total of 88 acres, I think, that were proposed into it. You said they got 13 done, but yeah, from what I can see, it was in the fix one. That we had done back in 2007.
So we get another opportunity in that prescription, with them we get back down trying to, you know, get the rest of the evidence. It's manageable, set out.
But I think we'd say that one thing I need here is that fire safety council meeting, or maybe it was the key before, it was a little bit more advanced warning to the community if possible. So that, because it kind of surprised, I think. But I think everybody recognizes that the windows open and close pretty quick.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, so Shasta Trinity, you know what I didn't do? I didn't really do the introduction. So we've got people that probably might not know. So at least before we get to the Hayford side, introduce yourself.
I'm Ray James. I'm the district FMO at Hayford, calling for Tom Hall.
Does everybody know Raymond? Ready? Introduce yourself quickly. Introduce yourself, Hall, right now, from Hayford. Anybody else that is new, that nobody knows? I think everybody else probably knows everybody else, so kind of. Okay, so Shasta Trinity, you guys can do rock, paper, scissors to see who goes first? Or you might let your supervisor have it.
That's right. I'll go ahead and go. Okay, I would like to say that, I'm going to stand up. There's a few breaks. We're going up to the car fire. Saw some fuel breaks on the BLM. And for the most part, they looked pretty good. They survived. I think you and I talked about that, but for the benefit of the collective, if you have a chance to go up there, you want to know where those fuel breaks are, I guess, get hold of BLM. But I was, it was amazing to see how the fire went to the ground. Yes, there was some collateral damage, but for the most part, it looked like it did its job. The fire went down, the fire flame lanes were somewhere around three to six, seven feet instead of 100 feet. Yes.
Can you describe the fuel break, like why, what does that have to do with it?
You know, it was variable in width, but it was, the area that we stopped right along the Forest Service Road, I would say it was about a quarter mile wide. So that would probably be maybe 400 feet on one side of the road and about 400 or 500 feet on the other side of the road. And there were, there were some large trees that were scorched, but by and large, it looked like most of the large trees had survived. And around that area, it was obliteration. It was pretty bad around that hazard.
So this would be off of County Line Road, just west of County Line Road. North of 299 or south of 299?
It would be north of 299. Yeah, yeah.
So we are, I think we are working on, so we're required in any fire larger than somebody acres to go back in and look at all of our fuels treatments and look at whether or not they were effective. Tim had of course started on that, because we actually had quite a bit of not only fuels treatments, but some thinnings that we had done, and then some recent running would be done on those things. But obviously now with Tim not being around, I don't know how long it will take us to get to that. But we will have at some point, you know, look at whether or not our treatments were effective and whether they've been done. We had a few, not only in Shasta County, but in all of our urban interfaces in Shasta County that we need to get.
Can you report, will you provide a picture of the drone, like maybe drone shots or something, so we can see? You know, other than just the description of what it is?
I mean, not the drone, because we don't have anybody to.
You don't have a drone?
We have talked about during that, the steering committee meeting, we just haven't been able to get high end units.
It's a thing of the highly education of these nations, not just for us. We did include that there's a future worth the devil's words. And so you say, this is what worked. Yeah, I think that what communities now might be listening to. I think the format requires us to have the fuels. Except for us, it's, I mean, it was, because we have all the work we've done in our urban interface in Shasta County, each one of those has to be looked at. It's probably tonight, we need something like that, treatments that will have to be looked at and assessed. So it's a heavy, it's a heavy lift, not having resources for the treatments.
So I think Larry got a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how long ago the treatment?
So I don't know specifically which one you're talking about. We've had, we had everything from treatments that we burned, you know, probably three months immediately prior. So some of the prescribed burning we had done in the spring, and then it obviously had the fire hit. And then we had some stuff that obviously was more, several meters over than that. You know, bodywork in the urban interface on, we have variance permits where private landowners can't get their defensive space because they're too close to the BLM boundaries. And when they come, you know, over on the BLM to get their 100 foot required. So we have a lot of those types of projects too, where I think we had nine or 10 of those. And one of the houses actually survived the fire. So, yeah, so it's a, it's a really broad spectrum of treatments. Everything from roadside thinning that we had done in Rich Falls to, you know, kind of large, but it's still.
Anyway, I was working.
Well, thank you. We are also doing some understore burning on the tree remediation unit. It's important to know that during the campfire, we were ready to engage in some understore burns. And we were basing at, outside that we were basing. But because of the campfire, there was a moratorium put on fire. So we missed about, and probably saying it's not worth, we missed about a week and a half, maybe two weeks of fires on the windows. So we're still doing underburning, but we're catching up. But it's worth mentioning also that because of that, the leadership in state felt like it was not appropriate to fire on the ground, which is what's happening in the suburb area. On the tree remediation unit on our side, we, the biggest fire was the car fire. It started on a car, a powerhouse, and as we know, it's just a balloon in a direction. We did have a lot of fires down at the canyon this year as expected, but we caught those fires. We have a good presence down 299 and Corlmore, that's where we were all the way down to Burr Ranch. And there were a few scary moments that we had, but we caught those fires. All in all, I would say that's around 25, 30 fires now down canyon over. So I think that's good. One of the things I noticed, living in Weareville, you get that western wind, and starting in July. And so it's no wonder we have a fire in that area and looking at that. Was not aware of that before I went here, but it's a serious Republican fire. So going back to the car fire, it did hit the eastern portion of my unit. All in all, the car fire was 240,000 acres. That fire was unified command, and there was a considerable amount of those remains that were created by campfire. And so we have this incredible amount of logs, green timber, what to do with. So our reeds and our specialists out of the fire, we were able to get those logs. And we made an offering, the good news is, we may not have been, but we got 900,000 foot feet of logs. It was sold to SPI about one and a half ago. So we missed the green, because it was stuff that was already down. Yes, yeah, those are suppression line logs created during those, during the fire itself. So we felt like we made a connection to reverse the action, and so we're able to go forth and so forth. And so as if that were not the fire, whether 60,000 acres. And so there, there's, they consider a battle, mixed up, particular answer to these fires. And so we felt like we had to do something with the standing dead timber. And so there was a decision made on the forest. Scott and the rangers were involved with this. And so we're using a categorical exemption road maintenance CD to capture those standing dead trees. And so the important components that you need to know is it's a road maintenance CD. So we're going to rehabilitate the roads, as you know. There are suppression activities, there's a lot of tracks that go over the road, breaks up the hard pack. It does a number on these roads to where sometimes you'll get 10 to 20 inches of powder on these roads. And sometimes the roads are identifiable after suppression activity. So we felt the need beyond the bare work to go in and do some work on this. So we are presently working on that. And we have an IT team comprised of all three ranger units, TRMU, the SHU, and the Shasta Lake. And the big push is to get, as I mentioned, the roads in a favorable condition, but also get those standing hazard trees, both commercially and non-commercial. And so we're talking in excess of 100 miles a road. We're still working on that, identifying, fine tuning those areas. But the activities that we're looking at particularly are the main components and the road maintenance will be waiting digitally. There will be some occasional ditch repair, or I'm sorry, culvert repair. But I would say most of it will be digitally, because sometimes you can't identify those digits like that. So we do that. The hazard trees that we've identified, there is a significant component that varies somewhere around 15,000 or 18 acre. If you're capable of leaving that on the ground as is. So it's our proposal to commercially remove that. There's also areas within this proposal that were, there will not be commercial volume that will require, as you were saying. So there's going to be opportunities for family. I would say that there's, there's going to be more opportunities for family commercials just because of the nature of topography and batch type. topography and vegetation. A lot of oak, a lot of brush. I think once you get about 9500 feet, you'll start getting that mixed con for those to be the areas where there's opportunities for commercial. We've already started a little bit of identifying some of those areas with our cell crew. We have a lot of challenges with the mud up there right now. We have just enough rain. It's steep, we have checked for ownership, not just with BLM, but with Service of Industries. And shelf life of salvage timber, as you know, it's short. We have about a year, maybe a year and a half, depending on the elevation, sometimes of the essence. And so it has certainly a priority of just in the forest as well. So we hope for a decided target in the spring. We did have successful. We have combined the delta fire and the car fire. This is both a car delta, categorical exemption action. Felt like because of the efficiency of high teams, best of those teams together, they had action. So, but are there any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
On the sale of SPI, was it mixed con for, or was it particularly on species that was made up of vulnerable?
It is mixed con for, but that's, that's a good question because pine, as you know, sometimes it's hard to sell because of the stain, the, the main component of these decks were better. We also want them for a white for right now, make some cedar, not so much pine, they'll take pine, but it's done this for a white for those are the targets, the species.
Good question. So any other questions? So how about non-fire related updates? Is there forestry issues? You got any other project stuff to?
Yes, I am. If you want me to add, I'd be happy to. Yeah, so I can go to any of your questions if you'd like.
Sure, and then we'll save joint chief stuff for later.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Burr Ranch project, we, we still have work to do. We don't have all the specialist reports yet. We're working on that. I wasn't here for the last two quarters to give an update on that. I don't, I don't think Tom will come with me on that, but expect him to. But we, we do expect a draft EIS. We're thinking that because of the car fire, delta fire, that has detract a little bit from indicated projects, if necessary. Also with the pilot project being a priority project, Burr Ranch is still rolling down a little bit slower, but it's, it's. Just for everybody's knowledge, Burr Ranch is really comprised of thinings out of 24 inches DPH that we alternate to, we also have a mastication underbury, the typical fuel treatments and incline. But I think the variable density thinning and the fuel, fuel breaks along the roads, those would be, I think those are the characteristics for the Schlitter project, variable density thinning and fuel road breaks. Alternative three, if you haven't remembered, I believe that's, that's within the same footprint, but we're going down to 20 inches DPH. And I don't think there's any treatments, fuel treatments for the temporary reserves. So that could be a change to our three and two. Trinity House Prescribed Fire, that is EA, that is just prescribed fire within the 17,000 acres. There will be an occasional hand line put in, protect some reported features that we've identified. We have most specialist reports in, one more specialist report, that is a veg report, and we feel very confident that we can get a draft EA by the end of March. We feel pretty good about that. Petty John EIS, of course, that's in litigation. There's a joint status report scheduled for the end of January, and the only other information to share is that we will be re-cruising remarking just because the market timber sale is old. So we feel necessary to capture any of, and so we'll be doing that this, this year, some more access should be good. Brown's Phase Three, you may have heard that was an offering that we were successful. It was about a 700,000 foot offering. Warner Enterprises purchased the contract, it was an IRTC. Happy to report also that Warner was the purchaser of previous two Brown's projects, so he's known quantity, he did a good job, and so he did not operate this year, or anticipate perhaps next year, it's a three year contract. That was awarded in September of this year.
And that's the last phase of Brown, Management Brown Marshall in the Fion Forest, right?
Yeah, within the Weberville Community Forest, based in South Florida East Side. And so, it was a squeeze, we got done, especially with the fires, so give a lot of credit to our cell ground staff, and Kelly, she did a great job.
Barry, yeah, maybe if I may, it's just been over a year, and like I say, if we're not forgotten, I'm in the Lena fire, big bar right through Junction City, and it's still in my mind, because I still got 75 neighbors' houses that were burnt down, and like I say, it's just over a year. I'm wondering back, I see some control burn, in the meantime, it's cleaning up, it went all the way up to watershed, the Arch Metal, which is beginning of the Conner Creek. How's that being addressed, maybe that on the BLM, I mentioned it before, where we've lost that seven acres right there on my road, and we're going to try to get in, this is the mouth of the Conner Creek. It's never been addressed. We just had last week, five neighbors blocked, fired out in the drone, just dropped on our road, left two, three minutes to stay, couldn't get in and out. We're pretty impressed that on the Mount of the Conner. We'll be back on all the Forest Service, back on addressing again. That Lena fire and the, that whole mountain watershed, on the Conner Creek, the Arch Metal. You see it all on 299, and that's yours, Forest Service.
We, we are aware that the priority right now is, is the car fire, not, not to say that we haven't paid attention to that, I have seen that. What I would suggest is, is maybe for you to come in and talk with me about the opportunity. You're more familiar with it. I haven't had my battalion chiefs come to me and make proposals, but I certainly would entertain.
You know, I want to do that, and I really appreciate it, because I can say, next year, you're going to hear me going, well, where's the follow up back on the car fire? 12, you know, 14, much later, so. No, I like that, and that's what we'll do, so we can kind of keep up with it, so this stuff, and the years, it's already forgotten. We've had so many fires, my heart goes out to you guys and all the effort that you're trying to do, but in the meantime, we've got to address the issues. I'm telling them, when it starts raining, this is going to happen, that we're going to pay a year later, what's going to happen, right there on Conner Creek, through the mountain, the river, as I address the river issues, and the dishes, she's going, I can see it coming.
So Kelly has something?
One comment to that, to that point, Barry, is that the RCD this past year, through the bear process, had done some upstream restoration on Conner Creek, you know, revegetation, plant trees, et cetera, et cetera. So there's some work that they've got through the Forest, through the Forest Service bear process, to get some of this low elevation and stuff out in that area.
Okay, that's everything that I've been able to say.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just on the right on the mouth, you got 12 families right there, it's on Quail Road, Stewart Road.
Okay, so it sounds like an opportunity for you, Barry, to just go in and say?
Yeah, I like that, we'll do that.
And go and get stuff.
Yeah, we are still, so we offered salvage twice on Lena, mostly focused on roadside units and then some other bigger ones. We didn't want those sold, but offerings. We were attempting to repackage for a third time, the car fire hit, so obviously.
This is something that'd be done in a day to take that dead down, because she's fallen across.
So we had, we did have the seeds out, I think they did a spell, they stayed like a two week stint at Junction, the campground at Junction City, and they gone for two weeks on hazard tree removal, but it's on our radar, and we've got essentially, you know, we've got three fuels treatmenters that are ready on this, they can cut down trees, and then some, you have to chase money or try to get the seeds or the ingredients or something to it, but I remember you talking about it, and I just dropped the ball and everything else.
That's right, I've been working on opening the mouth of that Conner Creek, it's been pre-showed for generations, for almost 20 years, so I don't feel bad to.
Joe, okay.
Sure. Who mentioned the pilot project, Shane Fielding? Where's that on the schedule?
Pilot project? I don't know. Probably it'll come from both.
Okay, I will be on that.
Okay. Carol?
So on a less serious, but on Lena, for Shasta Trinity National Forest, it's my understanding that the pack mules from the Center for Excellence are in the Rose Bowl Parade.
Yay! There's our mules.
Yeah, they just, I guess they just left yesterday. They left a bower, I think.
They're, they're just down in the valley for now. And our new packer will also be in the parade.
That's great, because you guys really need to slam on your Facebook page, like, hey, those are, that's our Center for Excellence, that is, you know, our mules and the nation watching.
Would that be on the Trinity County residents make good? Okay, anything else for Joe? If not, we'll turn to Ray.
Yeah, so over the south fork, we had two fires here, the gray fire early in April, then we had the current fire. Except right now, we're not doing post-fire, it's on either weather fires. Other than, this pressure we have, it was completed on all line, I think, on the two fires. So compared to the rest of the world, the south fork was pretty calm, I think, this year, you know, we had some fires there, and the canyon overshadowed by the delta car. So no extra work going on there as of now. So when we go into other stuff, so I got a little bit of report, also on the pilot in the Duke Kala. So there's a meeting last, just a couple of weeks ago, to work on the silviculture modeling. They're working on getting some reports on that and the enterprise, so that's going to come in January for that report on the pilot. The dishes, the pilots. Yeah, Tom's looking to set up a field trip, the field raid work group, to go out with the prep crews for sample water, to calculate the crew and what it depends, so keep me back around December 26, something you work on that becomes bad, and you're on field trip there for pilot. Right now, that's all I got to report on the flight, Tom's been on for a month, so I should have been wanting to do that. None of somebody else we hear about that.
Do you have anything else to report on the pilot project?
You know, it continues to be a challenge in terms of, it's almost our capacity, and we're working to find that model in a, in a situation, but I'll make good progress on that. Now, we're still expecting to say next year on that.
Okay, anything with regards to consultation and any updates there?
So, as you know, we're working with Fish Wildlife Service for programmatic biolaboratory in for fuel break on ridges and roads and communities, adjacent communities. You know, that, that team is just still, you know, getting started and working on that. We're hoping that that programmatic is, is done in time to be able to use that for the consultation on the pilot project. But we'll make a decision about, you know, the state of that early next year, not even sure whether we use that or not. Still the plantation piece, obviously, we, we have a consult on this, obviously a big issue there.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got a couple of things on Duke Kala, special supports are still going on with that, except last one in January, when the whole evidence gets back, complete the report on Duke Kala. And then also identifying plantations, including the first offering, we're working on the IRTC for Duke Kala. And that's what I got, the two projects, and some other things that we've been working on with, in January, you want that in that word?
Healthy forest restoration?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so, so still to discuss, we're going to use that act, got 2,000 acres in the category, got some areas identified, towards watershed, go the Duncan Gulch and Mark Creek area, Rush Creek, the Little Creek area, the National Forest area, Clock Creek, County Forest Creek, and Duke Hill Creek.
And that, assuming that that means using categorical exemptions that are in forest restoration, right?
Yeah. And there's some other good ones, different stuff we've got here, the street line we
were going to talk about, the pencil, Trinity River lumber, and Phase One of the fuels contracts for the Trinity Post Fire and Detention, the salvage parties aren't going, that's by plantation IRTC, those are phased issue, they'll be closed in Dell next year.
Okay, so, question, so John and Larry.
Did you get a cause for the current fire?
I have not heard that definitely a cause yet on the current fire.
Those man calls.
That's, that's the order, but not a device or...
Yeah. Larry?
And I just wanted to add that they have burned on the Sins project, and do you know how much longer the rest of the winter?
Yeah.
But committing or?
Yeah, we're generally doing some roadside burning up there on the Sins project. It's really not post-fire of the Gray Bird canal, it's ongoing work, so we're looking at, there's still a substantial amount of work to do up there, so we'll be there through this winter, weather dependent.
Okay, cool.
And, and I wanted to just say it on the Heimont project, the play service, for our last meeting, we kind of, we finished our preliminary project ratings, rankings, and we're getting ready to bring it out to the rest of the community in larger form to get more input.
So moving along. Good, anything else for, or, or?
I'd like to ask Scott's question.
Okay, I was going to turn it next to Scott, just to see what else he might have to add that wasn't ranger district specific. So Scott, we'd love to hear that.
Well, you know, after this year, it only reminds us around Howard, it is for us people, our, our forest conditions, over the National Forest Agency and the Department of Slough, you know, looking here on the forest. A lot we're going into trying to validate our work in terms of pace and scale of restoration and work with our partners. We're jumping into some work with Alire, put together, some, have a joint five year plan around what is it working to do together to address this issue we've got. You know, that'll include reaching out and working with all of our neighbors, who's, who's, who's group, the forest vice councils. We've done all the efforts to think of what to put in, we need to do it to prevent another year like we have. Although we know how much work there is to get with the community, all of our communities are in the moment, we'll execute that. So that's going on. We're working a lot with our zone, we've got a zone of the sixth force in Northern California that are working together to prioritize work and share resources, build our capacity collectively. So that work continues, you know, we're better at working together, we're on these boards.
Charlie had something?
Just because Leslie couldn't make it to Shastel Lake, I'm sure you're all aware, she has accepted the position in Arizona, Leslie Ann. I'm not sure if you were going to announce it or not, but...
Send it.
Okay. And then a selection, I believe, has been made on the rec officer position at Shasta Lake, and although that position doesn't work here on this side, they do administer the SRC permit, so it's still a very important position for this district. And when all the notifications get made, I'm sure Leslie or Scott will send a notice out to the group.
Yes, thanks.
I'm, I'm curious of what the policy is right now on staffing, hiring, so that these teams, I know you're working now as a larger region, and sharing, but is there hiring too, so we can have fully staff or EAs, what have you? Has that policy changed because there was more moratorium on hiring, so we'll report that. Has that policy changed because there was more, more on hiring to report that status again?
Yeah, we, we were on hiring freeze through about March or, I think, for last year. That, that was lifted, we, we went through a quarterly process for hiring. We started to move on to positions. We're now, this year, going to be looking at doing a lot of the positions. We got, I think, nineteen positions. We played this first round and it was better, kind of our end of year set positions. Again, we talked a lot about my head, but you know, so our hiring is, is getting better, but still probably slow.
So it's, it's not a matter of funding, it's just a matter of finding personnel or recurring personnel or how are you? Is this, is this hiring permanent personnel or?
Yes. Yep, these are, these are permanent positions. We're, we're also working on our, our temp hiring currently right now as well. Those positions are, those applications have been accepted and we're working to hire our temp rates for, for next year. But the ones I spoke about were permanent positions. So we've remained, you know, challenged in terms of our, our budgets. You know, have all the people we think we need to do our work. We'll deliver the resources we got. But you know, all those positions are funded and, and then it's a matter of just getting to the process of hiring.
And you're funded for another week?
And we're wanting for another week.
We threw bananas.
That's right.
So in the hiring process, about how long does it take then once you're funded? To actually hire the personnel, get them to, you know, get them to work? What is that part of?
So it takes about three, four months to get somebody in a position.
Okay, any, anything else? Scott?
There's another question here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The question I had, I'm sorry, had to do with farm bill, depending back on the service general. More specifically, the chat, can we be interested or should benefits come to your way? Fire borrowing changes, impact you and the resources you're in during the land state here?
So fire borrowing, that was covered under the August budget last year is, is still not going to go into effect until 2020. We've got one more year where we can expect to see fire borrowing from. They, they've gotten where they borrow the money from places that generally don't impact our direct project. So depending on how bad the fire this year is, you know, we'll continue to manage that. One more year before we get to the fire funding fix. This year's farm bill, it was, there was an attempt to put a bunch of new tools for us in that farm bill related to forestry. And those are not included generally. There's, there's some things in there that help, but there was going to be a large package of legislative efforts that didn't make this year's farm bill. There's, there's still, I think, some discussions about where those things might find a home in terms of, you know, it's past, expand the categorical inclusion limits from 3,000 to 6,000 and do some other things to, to help us. There were some things in the farm bill I think I got a summary quick looked at this morning, trying to remember what kind of was there that, that helps us. If you were getting mad, I'll pull that out and, and then I could read it to you. But I thought I had a carry number, and it wasn't a lot because of the agreement not to put the forestry and things in.
I, I do remember that too, Scott, that there were some issues that were not going in 14, you know, or unfortunately.
Any update on pre-constitution, pre-convening of the rack?
Yeah, there is. So the charter for the racks was signed nationally, so we now have authorization to have the charter. So we jumped into convening the racks. And so it's talking about how we're going to do our outreach for rack positions. We've got two, I think, positions filled in Trinity, so a lot of work to do and put together. An outreach to get people interested in it, put together the nomination package, go back to the department. Times of the essence on that, the authorization gives us a couple of years of funding. Last look at that, looked like there's about $350,000 fraternity count.
For each of two years.
And so we have money. So we need to get rack reconstituted. Those conversations I wanted to have with Judy and the strategy for how to reach together, find those individuals that will just step up to rack and, and go through that nomination.
Yeah, and just as, go ahead, Joseph.
How long is it going to take to get these folks confirmed once you find them? In the past, it's been a real problem. It takes a year, a year and a half to get somebody confirmed where they can actually vote on the rack. So what's going to change about that?
Sure, you're concerned, Joseph. I don't want to answer that, you know. I think everybody recognizes that the time to get nomination package is done historically was atrocious. That, that started to speed up, but I can't predict how long.
Because I'm assuming this is like, you know, it's all racks everywhere.
It'd be.
Be a lot of nomination. All at the same time. So you think of the, the pipe may not be big enough, you know, to handle that. Carol and Larry.
So I know there are a lot of previous rack numbers sitting here today. So are they eligible, you know, to redefine, to, to be on the rack again?
So we, we've asked and are trying to get clarity on the question of after someone has served their two terms, you know, how long before they can be nominated again?
So none of us served two terms. We probably served the one month. This entire, this entire century. We were, we were rack members for this entire century. We don't know the answer to that question yet.
Trying to get that off. Washington office. You know, help maybe you that have served your life on rack. Come back and help again.
So are you interested, Joseph?
I would serve again, sure. And I think we have a number of people in this room that served on that rack the whole time. And I think that, you know, we felt we were successful in getting good projects on the ground. And I, I think most of us would probably re-up if we had the opportunity.
Who are you? Well, let's see. So Tom, Arnold, Joseph, Arnold, myself, and Raymond.
Yes, certainly brings the bag up to speed and has an institutional memory.
And we had, and Bob Morris was a candidate, but for some weird staffy kind of reason, after 18 months of application process, his was rejected.
And Brian Tavis too.
Brian, Brian is, so the two that, I mean, you have Scott mentioned, there are two active, two people who qualify and are full members. Brian was one and Pam Ossberger is the other. There are two people who were poised to begin, you know, with us when the law expired.
And that have been a full committee in?
Yes.
No, it takes 15.
Takes two. Well, you, you can be full if you have three members in each of the three categories. And nine is the absolute minimum that you have to have. But it has to, there, there's this weird group A, B, and C, you know? And group A represents certain categories of, of interest. And group B represents another set of categories of interest. And group C, the third category. You have to have three members from each. And they all, if you only have nine, they all have to say yes to something for, to approve. Because you have to have three votes in each of the three categories. But it's always work, you know?
And they're going to be there at the end.
Yeah, yeah, well, you could learn, you know, you could, you could pull it off with somebody on the telephone. You know, joined by phone a couple of times. But it's, well, we, frankly, for those that don't know, it got to the point where our, our rack was able to essentially do its job in one day.
But not initially, not initially, definitely, you know.
So a new, new vote will take.
Folks working together in order to get to that point again.
So we should be hoping to see some sort of announcements, advertisements maybe in the year.
It's far right out there. Jones, the designated federal official for the Trinity Rack on, on this side.
Okay. And there might be staffing changes.
So our rack coordinator, Susan Irwin, is, is retired. So there will be some changes in terms of the person doing kind of the coordination of that program. Jill will remain the D.
Barry?
Along that line too, back on BLM.
Here they are on their rack. So our charters, so same day our charters were all expired. The charters have been reissued and we have, so we talk about it in terms of years at this point. So I think our 16, the people applying 2016 are confirmed and ready to go. The 17s are pending. We have a set of nominations that have not been confirmed yet. And then 18, we're just doing, just opened the application period and closed it. And so we're working on nominations for our 18s. So hopefully, once the 17s are confirmed, we'll have enough people to make a program. We can actually have the, the big thing for us is our notice, our meeting noticing policy has changed. And so it's going to take probably six months or more of forethought in order to have.
That's the Federal Register noticing process.
Yeah, it has to be noticed.
Yeah, I said years on that. So we got the filing, it's the same source, I believe.
We know our BLM. The BLM racks don't give money like the Forest Service racks do. So BLM.
They're just advisory.
The councils are just advisory. They don't have a funding.
But you have a funding now, you're going to be able to run it again?
Our issue wasn't money. Our issue was all of our racks were put on hold by the administration. Our charter all expired and spiked, and then we had to start from scratch. So the main issue is getting the charters approved and then getting the members nominated. But yeah, no funding associated with the BLM side.
For transparency purposes, I'm the one that was confirmed in 16. And since you were on it, it's changed geographically. It used to be in northeast California.
Yeah, we had a rack in northwest California rack, now they're all one rack.
Northern California, so it covers all four field offices in Northern California. It's all the way from the Nevada border or into Nevada, all the way to Haverke.
Yeah, I always felt the, those rack ones are very crucial, and they certainly were at the mountain.
Okay, so anything else for Scott? Larry?
Yeah, I saw that there was a settlement for flat fire, about $10, $9.
Yes, there was.
Will there be any comments this way of that money?
So that was, that settlement just happened, I think, so we can have built that trade. Still, it's getting finalized. If you're not building a plan yet, I don't want to do that.
Do you have a say in?
I will.
Okay, so. So we don't have anybody from Six Rivers, but sometimes I know that Larry Glass is the mouthpiece for the. You got anything from?
No, he was expected to be here on business until this morning he came down.
And so then the other thing in this piece of our agenda was, did the Field Break Work Group have anything to report on? Joseph?
Before Tom Hall left on vacation, I had a discussion with him about the pilot project. And he told me he wanted to get a field trip together with the work group as soon as he was able to get some temps in place. Now, without consulting with the work group, I just assumed that we would object to that process. That Dan Gill has trained watershed center marking crew to this prescription. He said he is very pleased with how they took to it. They're very competent. And I urged Tom to drop the idea of temps. We didn't want to go out there two or three times to try to get this prescription right. Why doesn't he hire the watershed crew to go out there and market because they know what they're doing? It'd probably be one field trip for the work group rather than two or three. So that was, I hope the rest of the work group agrees with that. But that's the advice I gave him. I had no idea he was leaving within a few days on vacation. So anyway, I would hate to see us have to train a new crew when there's somebody local. And that's part of our whole, our whole idea here is to hire local people in watersheds and crew as local people. So I would hope, Scott, that you can help Tom make that decision.
Okay, anything else on that? Larry?
Yeah, well, I mean, I just want to say that what Jill just said, I mean, we, we had some good fortune with Dan Gill and, and recruit, he hired from the watershed center. They, they got it and went out, corrected a few things with them, and then they definitely had.
And it's the same prescription, right?
Yeah, it's exactly the same prescription. And, and, you know, different styles that come into the same thing. But yeah, it's the same prescription. So if we go down the temp route, I mean, we're taking it another year down the road. Let's use a crew that's already trained.
Okay, anybody else on this? Do you, you remember what the prescription was just in general terms, Larry?
Well, we see, I mean, we have a couple hours and we have Tom Hall saying, get it.
I mean, there are.
It's a, it's a basically diameter plus spacing based off of your S-shaped producing tree. Oak cutting, little rocky hardwoods, so it's just hard personally. It's built basic, thin front below and prescription.
Okay.
So widthwise though, Joe, it's 300 feet total. And that can be 275 on one side and 25 on the other, depending upon the terrain. But the ideal would be 150 feet each side of the road. And it also includes setting the plantations at front on the road that we're treating.
And if, if I, maybe I'm mistaken, but maybe at the August meeting, there was a discussion about in some instances, the total width being different?
That was just under one.
Okay.
One project.
Our, our second project would be more like 600 foot wide and it's way out by a seagull. And it's because of the lay of the land and we agreed to go over 600 feet.
Got you, okay.
And only on part of the project.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm remembering it now. I just remembered that.
Much flat, a lot of ridge.
Okay.
And that's what I asked you, Joe, about trying to incorporate that treatment into the hazard.
But I hesitated to answer to you. I mean, but I agree with everything Tom said, but you have to get out on the ground and you have to show people what you're doing. It's, it's complicated. But once, once the party truth, the watershed center got it down, they had it down. And we didn't have to go back and correct anything.
Okay, so any, Scott and Randy, anything to add to that?
I don't think at this point.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so if anything else from the Field Break Work Group then, or that kind of hit? So our next thing was just to kind of have, and we may not need this much time, but some sort of updating everybody on what the projects, you know, are in our Joint Chiefs proposal that was submitted earlier this fall. And so I don't know how much, because again, I missed the October meeting. I don't know how much was discussed. I don't know about that. It was kind of, you know, from the different rangers. And of course, we don't have Dan here to talk from the. here to talk from the sitter's side, but you know, what is, and Kelly, man, worked on the proposals, so he might be able to fill in some pieces there too. So, but we promise to come back to the collaborative, what it is that we actually got in that proposal. So, so.
I, I might as well start again, because we had a major meeting.
So just to note, um, I, I think all lands, all hands, uh, approach to this is good. I think we should be working on it. I think with the advent of the campfire, I'll get to the projects, I think a lot of people are anticipating what could happen. We did have 2014 work requirement, it's not here, but I had heard about that. In front of that fire, we did have the, uh, Weirville Community Forest Garden Gulch Fuel Treatment Project. And as you know, uh, by the, by the Florida Avenue, we recognize the Garden Gulch. When that fire came through, it hit that pre-treated area, I think within three or four months after, after treatment, and that fire in essence went to the ground and it exploded through. But it didn't do catastrophic damage. So the reason why I mention that, um, there's a lot of feelings, good sentiment towards that type of fuel reduction activity in that part of town. So with that, we have the Weirville Community Forest, uh, Fuel Hazard Maintenance Project. That is the anchor of our proposal on the TRMU side. It's about 1,500 acres and it's mostly understoryed buring. There is some jackpot pile burning. Does everybody know what the distinction between understoryed and jackpot pile burning is? Underst- understoryed buring, and I hope I'm correct me from the corporate office, but understoryed, understoryed burning is a broadcast. You go from, uh, it could be a length of, of space where you're lighting the ground and it's, it's a plain length of variable lengths, but it's typically three feet and it's, it's in a broad area. Uh, pile burning, uh, could be piles that are constructed in certain kind of year of the summer and then they're covered and then you burn, um, in the fall or the winter. Jackpot pile burning, which is a component of this project, is you have a pile and then you have a general area which may have another cluster of piles and you light that off and it's, it's more of a, of a pile, a little bit of a small broadcast, but in a very confined area. Would that be accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, good, ask that test. The other, uh, proposals that we have in the, uh, in the Joint Chiefs' proposal is the Buster Project, the Buster Homestead, it's about 50 acres and, uh, it's basically in understoryed buring, a little bit in highland, a little bit in faking as well. The other is the Trinity Post Fire Hazard Reduction and Salvage, commonly referred to TIPFERS. So we hear that project, uh, about 100 acres worth and that would be fitting, truting, piling and burning.
Where does that one go?
Uh, TIPFERS, the Denny area, um, the west side of our district. It'd be just east, uh, just south of Denny and, uh, it comprises, it's not one continuous area, but it's separated and fragmented a little bit, but it's on the northwest side of our district area. I can show you maps, I didn't bring a map with me, but, uh, it's, it's on the far western side. Uh, all in all, we have about 24, 50, 2,000, 450 acres, which I'm proposing in this and it's, it's primarily those three tools, I'm sure, burn, jackpot, burn, about burn, and then some, uh, fitting and truting. It's worth noting that there were, uh, 10 decisions that made this, uh, this Weirville Community Forest Maintenance Burn. Uh, we, we're looking at how we're going to do the NEPA, we haven't decided that. Uh, we are, we have some ideas, but within our own forest leadership team, we will be talking in the area in future how to tackle that because I am a lot into the project, I think it's a good project, certainly have to see, especially seeing the effects of what that did to your 2014 work fire. I should say that, uh, within this area, we have a lot of oak woodland, a lot of open space. We don't have a big canopy, just north of Weirville, so we have a lot of rats, a lot of grapevine, uh, and as I mentioned, a lot of canyon, canyon over Black Hills. So this is going to require several entries. You can't just burn that and then wait 10 years down the road, it doesn't work, it's going to require several entries. So, uh, this, uh, this project is going to be a three-year entry, uh, starting in 2000, probably 2019, 2020, 2021. We basically have 1,000 acres in each year proposed to treat in this project. Uh, so given the good public sentiment, uh, I feel like we have an opportunity to be successful. I think there were four projects that were proposed in California and wanted to apply. The important thing to note is the decision, according to Jason Coe, under the regional office, the decision, uh, who gets awarded these contracts will be the Denny Center. So it could be.
That's, that's this.
Yeah. So I haven't heard of it, it hasn't been made, but soon it comes. We'll find out soon.
Scott?
I, I pulled up that summary of farm bill that.
Okay.
Just to real quick, something from what's in that farm bill, let's not get it active with the Congress. So, uh, actually the hazardous fuels funding for the Forest Service went down by 3 million dollars. The CFL RP, um, program was extended 10 years and net allocation was increased to 80 million. Uh, this one is important, the neighbor authority was expanded to include tribes and counties. Uh, there's, um, there's some additional money for water source protection, uh, and there's a new CE category that was authorized for, um, protect safe trails and the litter habitat. And then the ACE program, which is our retirement program, was extended. That, that's kind of the summary.
Okay. Arnold, did you?
Yeah, I was going to ask Joe, um, the four projects you referred to, or treating California, or Hawaii, whatever, is everything in this county considered one project, is that?
Yeah, it was one, one sub-ville.
And then is there the, uh, do you have price tags on, on projects you just outlined?
I think Kelly can tell me. I didn't actually look those up.
Oh, we do, yes, there's, there's dollars associated with every one.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't actually look up what the, uh, the proposals actually were compared to ours.
Yeah, well, I was more interested in, in trying to understand, uh, just what it costs to burn different kinds of acres or what it costs to do different kinds of treatments, different surface chances. And I know that, you know, it knows I say there's one answer or one solution, but I'd like to eventually get a better feel for, uh, what it costs to do this kind of treatment in this kind of area or that kind of treatment.
You should be able to get that, sure.
And that, that would help us, that would help the rack, so it don't get us playing with this thing.
What was the total ask?
The total ask for our proposal was 3.8 million dollars. About a million of it was for Shasta Trinity, uh, for, sorry, for TRMU.
Yeah.
Uh, 900,000 of it was for South Fork Management Unit and about 1.4 was for the, uh, Six Rivers Side. And then there was roughly, I think it was about 500,000 for NRCS. For, for NRCS projects.
So Carol and Tom, you had?
Yeah, Tom, go first. I have a, you know, general question for the question of Joint Chiefs.
Okay, so Tom.
Well, just this, this whole idea of burning in the basin is, it's really a challenge and, and Joe will attest to this, is what Watershed Center and everything is that, uh, putting fire next to a community is, is tough. Smoke management is, is such a big driver of that. And when you want to broadcast burn, you have to have people on the driver's side and where you can have the fire. You can't, I say burning at the time, the people's, uh, risk aversion is pretty high. And so it's a, it's a really icy thing when you're trying to say if you want to introduce fire next to communities, it would be, it would be a, um, type of project. And so I've been there for, for the proposal. Uh, it's, it's to be seen whether they actually put it on, even with them on, because, um, there, the smoke management is just such a tough issue when you're in a basin because. So, um, I'd be, if I were one of the judges, I was, who'd be distributing money to, I would be asking really hard, hard questions. How do you, how do you handle the smoke management when you're proposing to burn next to a community instead of your basin?
Yeah, just before you came, Tom, I mentioned that because of the campfire, we had a moratorium on burning and so we missed about a week and a half of a good burn window. It just happened to be that way. And, uh, yeah, we do struggle with that. So it's something that we have to fight through and with and just do the best we can. When those opportunities are there, we have to have them.
But it will, you know, there'll be, there will be a, a ticking clock on the, on using the Joint Chiefs' money, which they, you know, Watershed Center has struggled with that in some of their brains, strike fire, you know, where you got the money, but the money goes away on day X.
How is that, you know, very rarely because windows are presented themselves in basin. More often because of the fire, a lot of the fire contacts in the fall is, so the campfire being example, the Ryan County fires being example, last year, almost every year there is some kind of old crack, kind of October, November, that's the state somewhere. So I, I don't, I think smoke management, smoke management in the basin, Weir Basin in particular provides pretty good opportunities, especially on the northern town, on the eastern side of town, um, actually, we completely force it on part, it's the hardest for smoke management standpoint, because it, so apparently this pushes it into town, so it's in town. So I actually have a lot of confidence that even all presenting the right sort of burn windows, fuels, smoke management standpoint, hitting windows, as we sort of mentioned, there's pretty much we can have good prescription for the fuels in smoke management standpoint this year in a four basin, a four basin, really just because, you know, man, red light warnings in valley and eventually big fires will, you know, and so that's been our biggest challenge as to the in-county windows so much as the bigger sort of context. And I think statewide, like that's a conversation, the cow fire, the Forest Service, the, you know, whether we ought to be operating in basin or we are in prescription just because there's this bigger state context we're dealing with, because every time we miss those opportunities, we defer that risk to the next year and the next year and the next year. And so that's a tough trade-off for the highest level agency administrators, right, Joe, that's the thing to get to make that decision. Ultimately, Scott's hearing from his bosses that you guys aren't burning on character prescription. But I think my, my thought on the bigger, to Tom's point, you know, the bigger context of can be successful in Weir Basin, I think it's really realistic to make a good burn between 250 and say 500 acres in basin every year successfully. We can have those windows and then get other dating bases that we keep up and maintain, but it just, it's hard, then we're not going to get it every year.
And, and that's basically our concern. So Tim Ritchie and Laura Graham, we, we had this conversation many, many different times and we felt like 500, 500, 500 acres in a three-year term of this Joint Chiefs' proposal we could do. A little bit on the vicious side, but it is doing.
Yeah, and that was, that was my, my experience or my conversation with Laura was that that, that project that they were proposing was, was more like 4,500, but they said there's no way that we're going to do that in three years. So let's just, you know, back, you know, rein that back. And I think that the, the work that, you know, your guys as crews have done over the past couple of seasons, sort of speaking to the, the proximity with the basin, the northern portion of the basin, you know, we had several burns in the past several seasons and there was very little smoke impact, just because of where they were and how the winds moved through that area. And we saw sort of the opposite of that with the, the 13 acres that you guys burned because of just the way that the smoke just filters right straight into town compared to being more on the northern edge of it. So I think it's, I think we have a good option to be able to be successful with the projects.
Yeah, and another thing on that front, you know, when we don't get to burning them, so say we have a grant, it says our primary purpose is to try to burn 200 acres. You know, if we get to October or November and we see we're not going to burn 200 acres, we just take that money in the domain of fuel production work, right? So we just go out, we have alternative contingency projects and just keep working, right? So money doesn't evaporate, it just doesn't get used for that purpose, but it gets used for another.
But you might not keep the same acres.
Exactly. But it was, it was sort of, you know, the last 10 years, um, for a similar, we average about $250 per acre for strap burning, broadcast burning, while there are an interface. So, you know, woodland is an exophore, grassland is kind of across all those fuel types, it's about $250 per acre for doing annual fuels reduction. So fitting, pilting and then burning piles, we're talking about, you know, anywhere from $700 to a couple thousand dollars an acre if you factor in all costs, plus a pile. It costs a lot less to do, you know, broadcast burning, but it's logistically a lot harder to accomplish.
Okay, so back to Carol, a very more general question, then I thought there was something I had to hear.
But, so one of the ideas we threw out, well, we were trying to figure out which projects to include in the Joint Chiefs' proposal was some sort of shaded fuel break along Highway 3, because we don't have any forestry projects and a little bit of ham under the collaborative. And so that in the proposal, I get that. But it dawned on my memory to ask a question a little bit more generally, which is, um, are the County Creek and Mill Creek stations still staffed and are they able to kind of come and do as far as their training in the past, they've done some like roadside, you know, minimal shaded fuel break stuff, is that still an option?
We, we do have, they are staffed, I'll answer your question one. We do have them do hazard fear reduction. Has to have NEPA done on it, we just don't go out and do it unless it's a urgent situation. But we do have projects that they, we do and we'd like for them to do it because it keeps the crew busy, they have to have skills for chainsaw work and so it's, it's a win-win. And they have done hazard fear reduction treatment along roads in the past.
Well, before, you know, like here, we're, and they got to respond to a fire coming to Bill weeks ago, um, and, you know, a lot of the neighbors tried to put out a fire, Forest Service came in. But, um, that's still like has one evacuation route for that community and the habit event at the point where Jones Highway 3 is the big chunk of the Forest Service area that's totally overgrown and it's only 10 miles down the road from Mill Creek Station. So how would you get NEPA to do essentially that reduction?
It would be good to have a proponent, whether it's the Denny Agency or somebody coming from the public, uh, can do that.
Yeah. I mean, our, our, they, they, they get out there with weed whackers and go and do all up and down the, the road and everything, it's just right in front of the Forest Service property then at the junction of probably coming through drive, which is an evacuation for me and I would say.
I have a thought on NEPA that has been done, I mean, we can get together a bunch of charlatans.
But, I mean, is this within the couch transfer anyway?
Part of it would be.
Not much.
There was a 3/3 foot scenic strip over there and that's the main one and that's the main.
Yeah.
Joe? I just wanted to know if we know what the hay fork projects are being proposed. Uh, I think we know where Dan Gill wants to go. He told us last time he's got 10 years of work lined out, but I'd like to know what hay fork is. I would like to know.
Unfortunately, I need to agree to that.
So I know a little bit about, okay, the, so for the, the South Fork Management Unit, I think what Tom Hall was mostly proposing, and again, the, the main, as we had discussed, uh, I think in the August, um, collaborative meeting, uh, he was focusing on community safety and so, uh, most of the units that he had proposed to do in that $900,000 ask for supplemental unit. unit were a continuation of the Middle Hay Fork Plantation Thinning, some plantation thinning that was happening on the west side of the Hay Fork Basin, and then some that were in the Wildwood area, and not necessarily, you know, associated with any of the other projects that we sort of already talked about. From what I remember, those were the kind of the focus, is that it was, it was been on acres that he wanted to treat, and most of it's, and most of it's plantation thinning.
So maybe something that would help is if we haven't done it, we need to get our Joint Chiefs proposal, you know, the collaborative weapon. People could look at it and, you know, just.
Well, in addition to that, you know, last time, many of us felt like we were kind of left behind in the, in the whole process of three years of funding. It was always, here's what we did with the money, not, you think this is the best use of the money. So I would propose that this time around, if money actually materializes, how about everyone coming to the collaborative at the beginning of the year and say, here's what we want to accomplish, here's how much money we're going to allocate toward it, and so that the collaborative can feel at least they, if they don't agree, they can object to that and perhaps modify the proposals. But, you know, I just saw, I heard a lot of people say, well, you know, last time, we kind of got left out, we just got reported to after the fact. So I think we ought to try and change that this time around.
The only thing that I know that I would add, I guess, to the conversation was that Dan, Dan Dill's, I think, main asks were, were continuation of the existing Kelsey Beaver Slide Projects, Roberts Brews, the Hager Woods Project, which has got that modified prescription, and it seems like there was one more that I can't think of.
Maverick Ridge?
Maverick Ridge, that's right. As a maintenance.
Maintenance of the work that the RAC funded ten years several times, so yeah, several times. Your after you. Okay, anything else on the Joint Chiefs, so we can get the actual proposal up somewhere where people can kind of have reference to it.
Yeah, and Jenna Krenog from the NRC guys, they don't really report out on specific, I mean, they can, it's all tied to specific private properties, but I think that they've had looked at something like 50 acres of treatment on private property or something like that, mostly forest health management.
And my recollection is, you know, the way, just as we did in the time before, their thought process is to find private landowners in the general vicinity adjacency kind of issues to where the projects are happening on federal land, is, you know, it just, it's just more additive than having isolated parcels here and there where they, they have clients already there. They continue to struggle with the issue of other, other production issue, you know, activities on the private land, you know, they're doing cannabis, they're growing rose, and they have to be careful about how they can help those landowners. They seem to have actually made some headway in how they approach that, so they actually have a little bit more flexibility there. So. Okay. Okay. Okay, so in previous meetings, you all had asked for a discussion kind of on master stewardship agreements, so now till, I think lunchtime, we've got Nick kind of taking the lead on the discussion for, on the master stewardship agreement process, and I'll take on one of my other jobs, which is to make.
So if I understand right, the group got really interested in master stewardship agreements after a subset of you all met with Barney Gant, who's the deputy regional forester for National Resources, and he essentially promoted the idea that the Trinity County Collaborative Group or the County of Trinity or some subset of all of us sought to have a master stewardship agreement with the Forest Service, or master stewardship agreements to accompany our work together. And I think groups compelled by the idea, there are a number of counties in California that have master stewardship agreements, there are a whole bunch of nonprofits, tribes that have stewardship agreements with Forest Service, and it's one of a bunch of vehicles for sort of cooperative work with Forest Service. So I'm going to run through a quick presentation just to sort of make sure we're all talking about the same thing, and then hopefully just have a discussion about the utility of master stewardship agreements for our share of work. Super unexciting PowerPoint with no pictures at all, but didn't mean a guy to talk. And I'm going to start actually just with a distinction, okay? So working with Forest Service, they've got a number of different ways they can kind of make work happen on national forest system lands. So they've got a whole suite of contracting tools, right, that are things that they do with for-profit companies, they can do timber sales, they can do service contracts, they can do stewardship contracts, those are all competitively bid as solicitations and awarded, and then Forest Service staff administer those contracts. Then they have a whole package of agreement mechanisms they can use, and those are cooperative tools. So those are agreements that are mutually negotiated for mutual benefit between nonprofits, counties, and tribal governments, and the state, and the US Forest Service. And so what we're talking about right now is stewardship agreements, which is a very specific sort of agreement tool that has some really specific sort of uses. And they've been, go ahead.
So the distinction between contracts and agreements is that in, in the contract world, we have work we want to get done, and we're going to pay somebody to do that, and they're going to make a profit. In the agreement world, it's about when we have mutual interest to do work together with another entity. Profit cannot be made and the cost of share. That's the basic difference, is that agreements are vehicles by which we get work done that we both have interests in getting done, but there's a real distinction there.
Yeah. And stewardship agreements, among all of the agreement tools, are the one in which there can't be profits, but there can be revenues generated and reinvested in more stewardship work, right? So you can sell essentially timber, right, the value of trees, and reinvest those in more service work. That's the unique thing that stewardship agreements have that no other agreement mechanisms allow for, much like stewardship contracting, right? The difference between a timber sale and a stewardship contract is that a timber sale, the revenues from timber receipts go back into the federal treasury, and under a stewardship sale, stewardship contract, the revenue from the timber can flow right back into stewardship work on the local district without having to go back to Washington DC, reappropriated by Congress, step back at the ground again. So the whole idea behind stewardship, whether agreements or contracts, is really that you can reinvest the revenues from timber receipts back into shared priorities for stewardship work. You can do that in either contracts, stewardship contracts, or stewardship agreements, but we'll talk more about what else agreements buy.
Can you explain the mechanism where the money, revenues generated, don't they have to go to the forest supervisors? And then it's decided where that's spent, so it doesn't necessarily need to come back in that sense?
Scott can tell you. It depends on whether you use two of different, there's a couple different mechanisms.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple different ways the money into the agreement is handled. You know, you can, exactly right, stewardship allows us to use with the revenues generated from the product value, but in stewardship agreements, some of that goes to do additional work outside of the revenue generating ones, so we do service work under the agreement. It can also generate a program income, which is made to be able to be used by the entity that we're reaching the agreement with to do, to do work, and that can include some performance of work payments. And then there's retained receipts, which is kind of the excess, and that goes into a retained receipt account that can be used for a variety of work. And you're exactly right, it's not specific to the location of that agreement necessarily.
But usually under a stewardship agreement, you can bet that service work money will come.
Annual negotiation. So I'll talk more about that.
It's all generated, it's all specific to the agreement, it's financially, it's a specific agreement.
Yeah, and the arrangement between the Forest Service cooperators and collaborators about how money's being used or not. So there's a lot, there's quite a bit of flexibility. So basic purpose, facilitate cooperative work on shared objectives. So there's a pilot program, started in 1999, semi-permanently authorized in 2004, and then I think in 2009, the last farm bill, not this current one, but the last one, permanently authorized stewardship authority. So there's no risk that if we use these, if we lose them in the future. And folks are probably aware that the Resource Conservation District has had a stewardship agreement, and then a second stewardship agreement with the DLM, they've had a stewardship agreement, and then a second stewardship agreement with the US Forest Service. Watershed Centers had two separate stewardship agreements with the Shasta Trinity, the South Forest Management Unit in the past. And so we have some experience using stewardship agreement authorities on limited scales, right? The ones that the RCD has are for the Leeuward Basin, the ones Watershed Center did were even more limited in scoping, were around Trinity High, it's kind of post-mountain area. So the new thing here, that in the last omnibus budget bill, they authorized 20-year stewardship contracts and agreements. So that's, that's a long time, particularly with water. There's some really specific objectives in terms of whether and why to use a 20-year agreement, basically tied back to creating new infrastructure for forest products utilization, basically for wood products utilization. Whole concept being businesses need a long timeframe to do business planning and to make investments, and so a 20-year contract or a 20-year agreement would give you that investment timeframe, right, compared to a typical timber sale or even a great resource timber contract, which is going to be three years.
So Nick, do you know with our, Scott, is there rulemaking involved in going from 10-year to 20-year?
I have a memo that the Washington office put out that has kind of their direction, intent, there doesn't look to be any rulemaking. So there's just sort of the administrative guidance that the Forest Services put out. I don't know on BLM side, did you guys get 20-year authority out even though you didn't?
I think so.
Okay.
Can you send that out to us?
Send a 20-year guidance? Yeah, I can.
For the Weareville Community Forest, stewardship agreement that we're currently working on, we decided to go 10-year because the 20-year agreement's not quite defined yet. And the process of the agreement goes finalized, we probably have a fair bit of time to get to before we even get that agreement, so we decided to do 10. And then when those, when the 20 rolls around, then we'll be able to inform that potentially.
Yeah. Yeah, there, but anyway, I'll just be bad at that for the 10, 20 years. But anyway, those are the longest, the stewardship agreement authority, the prior one for the 20-year, that was the first time the Forest Service had 10-year authority even. So prior to that, and with all other agreements, there are five-year limits. And so most of the work that we do as the Watershed Center, or really most of the work the RCD does with the Forest Service, is under these participating agreements, which is a different type of agreement vehicle, and they're five-year agreements.
And that are tiered off of stewardship. Is that what you mean?
Well, if they're within the stewardship.
Correct.
Yes. So the big things here, the really unique novel thing about stewardship agreements that's different from a participating agreement, right, that we typically work with, is, is the use of timber receipts. This is really the novel component of this, is that you can use goods for services, which means the direct exchange of timber value for service contracting costs within a single contract, or retained receipts, which basically takes the timber receipts out of a very timber-focused project, puts them in a pot, and then you can access those retained receipts for more stewardship or more service contract work. Two different mechanisms to do roughly the same thing, which is keep timber receipts as close to the ground as possible and get them cycling back into stewardship work without having to go back to Washington Office and back to Congress. So most everything we can do under our other agreement authorities, so participating agreements, challenge cost share agreements, most of the vehicles that are nonprofits in the county typically use, we can do under stewardship agreements. The really novel thing is that, that retained receipt potential and that good service potential.
The interesting thing also, Ben, was that there was a contract, they had, it was an integrated base contract, they had timber associated. When I first started using stewardship authority, that money had to stay within the contract area, but now I'll just say this, if you can go out of the contract within the forest as a whole, right, the forest is very important.
Yes, you can define these larger stewardship areas that then you can use that money in, right? So if we did First Forty Eight, let's say, and we generated a bunch of timber receipts, but there wasn't so much stewardship work in First Forty Eight that we needed those dollars, we could put them into the project around Zena, right? Or actually with the retained receipts account, there's even more discretion than that, I won't even get deep into this, but basically they go into a regional account, which they could, could even go off forest potentially. And that's where the strength of the collaborative groups and partnerships really help to direct whether you get to sort of use your retained receipts money that are generated in your forest, in your county, or whether they kind of migrate out. So that's why it's really worth us talking about, you know, do we have any retained receipts in the counties that are coming off the projects we're working on? Where are they going? It's kind of the Joseph's, you know, question with Joint Chiefs, you know? Are we talking about the money that we have at our disposal for service work and trying to prioritize it, or are we just sort of taking it for granted? And that's, that's where I do think, you know, thinking about larger scale stewardship agreements could strengthen our hand, I guess, as collaborators. I already said that, I think the unique thing about stewardship agreements, compared to participating agreements, there's no training kind of requirement. So a lot of the work we do at the Watershed Center, Research Training Center, has this workforce development, training component. Stewardship agreement doesn't require that per se. Still requires 20% match. So this is something, Scott was just mentioning, the Farbell and Good Neighbor Authority, Good Neighbor agreements are another type of cooperative agreement. What might be unique about those is that they don't require any match from the collaborator. So right if the County of Trinity entered into a Good Neighbor Agreement with the Shasta Trinity National Forest, and Shasta Trinity National Forest wanted the county to have a fuels crew that was out doing, you know, thinning work, for instance, the county wouldn't necessarily have to come up with a 20% match to do that work. So that's unique. But under stewardship authorities and stewardship agreements generally, 20% match is the expectation.
And the 27% match is kind of the minimum requirement for match, you know, generally the expectation is that the match is great.
Yes. However, there have been stewardship agreements negotiated where they allow the 10% match. So.
If that authority entered into a stewardship agreement that is less than 20% from the regional source.
If we take that 10% to 20%, can you be working through any in-count?
Yep, in-count counts as match.
Take it back on account, there's no other.
So essentially volunteer time, participation from collaborators, yeah, all counts as matches as cash that we would raise from, say, state grants, which is typically how we're coming up with match now is special districts and nonprofits, because there's a lot more state money going towards this stuff. And then the last thing is that these can include multiple parties, so there are stewardship agreements that have three parties to them, so four parties to them. So it can be Shasta Trinity National Forest, the Trinity, RCD, the Watershed Center, and Trinity County could all be parties to a stewardship agreement. And we would all name live. And we would all name why we have mutual benefit from working together. We would just define our roles, our unique roles under that agreement, and then develop annual operating plans together and cooperative work under that agreement. So I'll give you some examples, and there are probably 150 stewardship agreements active nationwide. So this is a tool that's used kind of commonly now. Forest Service has a lot of experience with it. In Region 5, there's something like 15 or 16 active stewardship agreements that the Forest Service on many different forests holds. One from conservation districts to nonprofits, to tribes, to counties. And so I'll give you a couple of examples for the nonprofit kind of category here. The biggest holder of stewardship agreements nationwide is National Wild Turkey Federation. They have probably a dozen or more stewardship agreements all around the country. National Wild Turkey, right, they're a hook and bullet, you know, membership organization. They raise money to do wildlife habitat projects on federal lands. They enter into a stewardship agreement because they can raise money and technical resources with the Forest Service, and then they work on shared priority projects, usually at like a forest-wide scale. So they have a stewardship agreement with the Coconino National Forest in Arizona. They'll use Wild Turkey to do a wide range of tasks. And I'll talk a little bit more about the functions that you can go under stewardship agreement next, but. Loa Kati Restoration Project, this is a nonprofit out of Ashland, Oregon. They have, I think, five active stewardship agreements with multiple different national forests. So Robesiskew, the Klamath National Forest, the Pumas and the Modoc National Forests, the Fremont-Wanema National Forest, and all of those include other parties. So they have the Nature Conservancy as a partner on the Robesiskew. They have partnerships with Klamath River Tribe, Pitt River Tribe, and we're working on one with the Karu tribe right now here in California. So these are three-way agreements where Loa Kati, they do workforce training and kind of development work. Tribes try and create their own local stewardship workforces in their place. The Forest Service thinks that's a good idea and has some work to do on national forest system lands. They all rework together and they implement work similar to the way that the Watershed Center and RCD ultimately implement work in partnership with the Forest Service. Nature Conservancy probably has a dozen or more stewardship agreements nationwide where they have offices and staff that are doing work, kind of all-lands work on public and private land all around the country.
I would just mention that down in Arizona, we were working with the Nature Conservancy under a master stewardship agreement, and it was for 20,000 acres of work. But the intent of the agreement was for them to evaluate all our business practices and recommend how we want to work better and more efficiently. And so it was a neat effort to get restoration work done, but it was more intended for them to bring in outside expertise and help us figure out how to get more stream work to the government.
So ultimately, Nature Conservancy hired Campbell Global Group, which is a national, you know, international forestry consulting firm who does very whiz-bang kind of technology-driven analysis and planning and implementation work, right? So it brought innovation, and that's a big thing when you look around all of these master stewardship agreements, is they're always sort of trying to push the edge of a business model, trying to think about how to do business differently, more efficiently, more effectively, bring more resources to the table, bring additional staffing. Some local government examples, there are a couple, there are more than a couple now in Region 5 in California. Tuolumne County is a good kind of classic example of, I think, how the county and the Forest Service are working together. The county has a natural resource division. The county has hired retired Forest Service staff within their natural resource division. There's a master stewardship agreement between the forest and the county. The forest uses the county staff or former Forest Service staff to basically supplement Forest Service capacity. That includes sort of contract development, solicitation, contract administration on timber-related projects. So right, adding to the Forest Service's capacity by bringing in professional staff upon shared priorities on places where the county thinks it's important to do work, right? So roadsides, around communities. Blaster Counties is actually focused on biomass utilization and air quality improvements. And so they're working with the Forest Service there on the El Dorado, I believe, primarily to try to facilitate wood products utilization or biomass utilization. Special district examples, so Turner County RCD is a real sort of touchstone example with the Weaverville Community Forest. Can I unpack more about that example? Some of you are on the steering committee, so you know about that example. And I mentioned some of the tribal examples. The tribes can also enter into independent master stewardship agreements with the Forest Service. The ones listed above all have a third-party partner as well. So the uses, you know, can run the whole gamut of basically everything the Forest Service does. From NEPA planning, so there's some examples in the Sierra Nevada, in the Northern Sierra Nevada, where the conservation district over there is basically doing the entirety of NEPA planning. So third-party NEPA for the Forest Service, where they've hired a bunch of specialists, including their own staff and contractors, and they've kind of put together a NEPA team. They're doing the NEPA planning work, and then they're plowing some of the money that comes out of retained receipts. So again, that timber value to go into another kind of third-party NEPA planning effort. So the sort of idea that you can continue to fund ongoing work is kind of, is happening. All this stuff that, for instance, Watershed Center and RCD crews and contractors do for the Forest Service works under master stewardship agreements, just like it does under participating agreements, just like it could under cost share agreements and stuff. But master stewardship agreement is key to actually facilitating this, but it can be done and is being done on a broad scale around the country. Contract solicitation administration, I think this piece is more unique to stewardship, master stewardship agreements. This is a, this is a very sort of specific, requires a very specific set of skills and qualifications to meet federal sort of wood products kind of procurement standards. And so this work, this contract solicitation administration of timber sales, almost exclusively happening in places where the collaborator, whether that's the county or the nonprofit, has basically hired retired Forest Service staff or has basically poached Forest Service personnel who already have these qualifications. So timber sale administrators, harvest inspectors, these sort of very specific sort of roles that have very specific qualifications and almost require you to go through a Forest Service training track. National Wild Turkey Federation, historically Rock Mountain Elk Foundation, Tuolumne County, all examples of places where they're doing this work for the Forest Service, and they're basically doing it with, you know, retired annuitants or poached Forest Service staff. So it's a force adder for the Forest Service, right? Where you don't, like for instance, up here, we're sharing those staff with six different forests. Now they're basically saying, no, we've got some other people who can do this work, and so we don't have to share that resource. We just use the money within the master stewardship agreement to make that work happen. Then there's direct implementation, kind of the work that we classically do under participating agreements or cost share agreements, where basically, you know, the Watershed Center, the RCD, for example, would use our staff, the Forest Service would contribute some money, we would match the money, and we'd go out and actually use, we'd pay the workers to actually implement on the ground. That could be everything from, you know, manual chainsaw work to mast caters to fresh strat fire.
One of the challenges of that middle area of work is that the entity takes ownership of the wood product. They pay us base rates for that, you know, basically in front of the agreement with the assumption that they do the work and then recover the value. That's often challenging, again, in terms of entities being able to come up with that, that money on the front end.
And it's not just a base rate, it's actually negotiated, right? So if the timber value is substantial, they could be added for.
You can't be less than base价.
Can't be less than.
Question, Ed?
Yeah.
Back on these, worrying on these contracts, I'm just thinking, boy, is that another way to set up sideline agencies? In other words, what's the timeline, or on these contracts, how many years on this fulfillment? Otherwise, you know, it sounds like a little interesting setup of business. We've got this agency of these five people, but it's.
They always have to tier the federal procurement standards and contract rules. So whatever the collaborator's doing can't be, can't be substantively different really than what the Forest Service and federal government is required to do.
But it's back on your decision there, as you get it together, do you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, so you can enter into agreements basically non-competitively, but the entity has to have a open competitive bidding process for any subcontracts.
So an example, I started something with the nonprofit scene.
Okay.
So maybe an example, a little bit different, but with a master stewardship agreement with BLM for the community forests. The RCD did negotiated sales and then implemented projects and took way more risk than we thought we were taking. Permit agreement. I mean, permit example. Yeah, and it, they could be honest, for a nonprofit, you know, organization and not having slush funding anywhere, it would get right scared.
Yes, but when we set Kennedy Forest 7, it was 1998 when it first went in, and that's how long we've been working on that. That's back on your grant, back with the RCD, et cetera, so it's still ongoing. And this is still, was a master agreement that we originally done 20 years ago?
Actually, so the first one was with BLM for the Weaverville 1000, and it was entered into in 2005 and then re-upped in 2015. So it's been, you know, basically 13 years. And the Forest Service portion of that came in 2008, which is why we'll re-up again now in 2018. Both cases, they were 10-year master stewardship.
No, I love the idea, like I say, if you were doing this for 20 years, you'd never dominate on whether it's some job security or are we starting subsidizing an agency out here for the next 10, 20 years on that same development? I'd never dominate it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, essentially it could be a, you know, a sort of revolving funding, sort of a virtuous cycle.
It kind of is.
It kind of is, but it kind of is. I think.
Just something to ponder about that particular issue is that even with the expansion into the Forest Service ground for the Woodville Community Forest, it's not like it's sustaining a business, you know? This is something that we, you know, we do as a benefit to the community more than anything else, because it's not, it's not like a great, a great deal of money to the district. It doesn't, you know, like the retained receipts, for example, I think for the Brownspace Tube on the Forest Service was something like $230,000. And I can't remember what the total on the BLM side was, but, you know, it's more just sort of about taking care of the forest, you know, at that scale. It's not really, it's not something that we're actively doing and it's a huge part of our budget, let's put it that way. It's not, it's not something that we make a great deal of money doing. It's, it's more about the management of the stewardship of the land.
Yeah.
The rules are that entities under agreements cannot make profits, you know, right?
Yeah. And you, and you, here in Trinity County, you'll, you never recover costs as a specialty district. You're basically coming with 20% the match that's sort of sustaining the whole thing, keeping it afloat. And so it's not, not a money-making endeavor. Now, there are places where there are more timber receipts, right? Where they're doing projects that had a heavier timber component, where the retained receipts are basically fueling much more work, right? They're putting, you know, one, two, three, four million dollars a year from retained receipts back into the service work. They're basically funding, you know, all the money that we're using for rate.
I'm thinking, thinking back here on your, and working these contracts.
Yeah, and I think there's some idea that we could achieve that in Trinity County, we could get more of a virtuous cycle, right? If, you know, the Westside Plantation Thin Projects, the, you know, Deer Pacific Purchase, and the Pilot Project had enough revenues, we could basically get a cycle going where we're starting to fund more of the work at the local level. But we're not there. There's no example of us doing that really successfully over time here. And can I just tell you, this part, and Pat just gave an example of them doing it with the BLM, when I look at the standards that you have to manage to for this contract solicitation administration on the Forest Service side, Watershed Center government does not have the capacity to do this, I don't think the RCD does. So there's no, there's no capacity in Trinity County to take this on. We really need the Forest Service to continue doing this work unless we find a retired Forest Service person who wants to do this. I think we could hire.
When you detail all that out, in terms of the specifics of that, and what goes with it in terms of the requirements that go with that, you know, it ends up being a 150, 200-page agreement.
Yeah, it's, the accountability is through the roof.
And it's not like either the Forest Service or the BLM have an excess of those people who are retiring and want to work. We're lucky to have, we have one resident at our state office for BLM California. So it's not like there's a bunch of them floating around either.
And that's why it's serious too, especially foresters, once they retire, they don't necessarily want to go back to the forest. Add enough of that. Retired for a reason, so there are few in part between, but there are.
Talk about the difference between a master agreement and a project supplemental, and any of the same along?
I wasn't going to go into that actually, so if you want to talk about that right now. So the sort of mechanistic way these work, if you want to do that now.
So basically, there's a full set of agreements, we've been talking about stewardship agreements, and you can enter into agreements, you know, about a project. When you've got a expectation of a longstanding agreement and doing a lot of projects within an entity, that's where you do a master agreement, and then you do project supplemental agreements under that. The master agreement is fairly broad, it's, it does not contain any specifics or financial information in it. It's really almost more like an MOA kind of, in terms of, it's got some voice length commitments to each other, but it doesn't contain any specific projects or details. All those occur in what are project supplemental agreements, or supplemental project agreements, excuse me.
SPA.
SPA, and that's the work that is done about any specific project. And the money is all managed at that, at that SPA level versus at the master agreement.
So all the terms are listed in that supplemental agreement. So essentially, the biggest master that says, we're going to work together at the Weaverville, you know, the Weaver Basin scale. And then there's a SPA associated with some work on the Browns project, and a SPA associated with some trailing work in the Weaver Basin community forests. And there's some, there's a SPA associated with some road work up here. You know, essentially, you create a new supplemental project agreement for each kind of individual piece of work. Ideally, everybody here can put together an annual operating plan.
Yeah, and that's basically been the MO for the Weaverville Community Forest, is that that create, you know, working with, they, I guess, ad-harc, kind of groups within, the Weaverville Community Forest Steering Committee, which has, you know, it's not Brown Act or anything like that, it's a FAKA or anything like that. It's just a group of local people that includes agency people on the BLM side, on the Forest Service side. And, you know, every year we get together, we go over the annual operating plan, which is basically just sort of a list of like, okay, these are the projects that we have prioritized. We reprioritize them every year as things get, you know, worked through. But then that, that priority list is sort of what then drives the focus of like, oh, let's do this project or that project. This project's going to be an SGA and is going to create this much retained receipts. Those retained receipts can then go back into other, you know, other agreements or other service work and whatever. So it's, it's, it's a lot of working together in order to sort of drive it. And that's just, that's just one example, I mean, I think, you know? And it's just been that there's a lot of community interest in the Weaverville Community Forest and the work that's being done for those master stewardship agreements that actually drive the work that gets done on the ground.
So a question? So back on the site project agreements, and I'm thinking of the climate, back on counting it. Okay, so can these be, as we come up with, say, a site project, we want agreement back on, can we include that in the? Okay, so can these be, as we come up with, say, a site project, we want an agreement back, can we include that in the, somebody else's a master? A master agreement? Or we start even in? Or did it a different way? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Anything that, anything that could fall under an existing master agreement right now. So most of the things the collaborative wants to do
Yes.
fall under some master agreement that the Watershed Center or the RCD have. So we basically, when you guys say, here's the priority and the Forest Service agrees, here's the priority, and maybe we've raised some money on the side to go do a thing, we just sort of look at our master agreements and we say, where does that fit? How do we create the legal vehicle to do that thing, meet or directly with, you know, Joe or Jennifer or, you know, whoever it is to create the supplemental project agreement to go do that one?
That's why we have it in the gym, so we get a better understanding on this.
Yeah.
Trying to chase the findings for our programs.
Yeah, and really thinking about, you know, whether what we already have in place is adequate or whether we need, do we you know, Barney Dan, the regional, deputy regional forester said, you guys should have a master stewardship agreement for Trinity, with Trinity County. And I question whether that we should or not, and we ought to have a conversation about that. So that's why, you know, talking about.
Absolutely.
Because it's a matter of scale. And, you know, the community forest, I guess, is relatively manageable, you know, and it's, it's easy to get buy-in from local people that, you know, it's very much in their backyard, it's something that they're interested in, you know, they wanna be a part of that or part of groups like this that sort of drive that. But the, you know, we're starting to talk about, you know, going like the entire West Side, like it's been sort of promoted in a few conversations that I've had, which would include pretty much all of the Chastity in Trinity County potentially, you know, that's a whole other, you know, level of scale that would take a great deal of drive and vision to sort of run, I think.
So is there a master agreement with RCD for you, a master?
The master stewardship agreement.
Yes.
Both with the BLM and.
Just for the community forests, but given Scott's definition, it sounded like there should be a master agreement overarching umbrella, and the community forest could be a supplemental project of that larger master agreement.
You could do it that way.
So that there'd be this umbrella of a master agreement with some entity in Trinity County, and any project that comes in could be a supplemental, so that each one does not have to do all that front work for it, which I think is what the efficiency that Barney Dan was talking about, to have that in place. And so if you go back to that, you know, perhaps, but you listed all the different agreements.
Yeah.
Are those, are those some project-specific master agreements?
No.
Like the community forests, or are they more overarching, non-specific?
They vary. Some of them are subset, some of them are subset of a forest, some of them are just a ranger district, some of them are entire forests, some of them are two forests.
So I think the question and discussion was more for the overarching umbrella master agreement that could kind of wrap the arms around any of the supplementals that we could certainly decide.
You're exactly right. You could do a master stewardship agreement between all of the entities that are wanting to work on in Trinity County together. And then do supplemental project agreements under that, where you would make, you would determine which entities were gonna be involved in that specific project, and what were the economics of that, and what were the what was the agreement in terms of that, that work.
And that would be the local.
You don't, you don't save a bunch of bureaucracy by doing a master.
Well, partly because we have, so the Watershed Center and the RCD have master agreements with the Six Rivers and the Chastity Trinity for their entire land bases, for all the work we do together already. So we already have master agreements that we tier. So a new master agreement, well, we would have to conceptualize, it's what more does it buy us than we have? The unique thing, I think, that the RCEs, Weaverville Community Forest stewardship agreement provides is another level of governance in between, right? It has a steering committee that helps us steer the name. The agreements that the Watershed Center has with the Six Rivers and the Chastity Trinity, the master agreements that cover the whole forest and everything we do together, that's basically what would be in a master stewardship agreement. Right now, there's no governance in between us and the Chastity Trinity, right? We negotiate directly with them, once we hear what all you want to do, right?
So, so if you have a master stewardship agreement for forest work and some brand-new project shows up,
Yeah.
can you incorporate that into your existing master stewardship agreement? Or do you have to create a whole new one?
No.
It would fall under the master agreement.
Yeah, but wouldn't it have to list that activity in that particular proposal?
Yeah, and that's typically, like, when we, when we just re-upped our master agreement with Six Rivers and.
It's a master participating agreement.
Right, and so when we were actually putting that together, you know, they said they, we're gonna throw everything in the kitchen sink into that, meaning basically, they're gonna list off any even possible, you know, like whether it's GIS, mapping, support services, you know, fuel production, you know, like every, every possible, you know, roads work, you know, sediment source reduction and all that kind of stuff, was listed in a very general way within the master agreement, so that it could be tiered off of, whenever they had a need, they could come to us and say, oh, we have this need, we're gonna create this agreement with you to do that work. So it's, it's a little bit different. The master agreement is one thing, the master stewardship agreement has more to do with the authority, what then can be done with, you know, any potential retained receipts, retention of retained receipts, revenue creation, et cetera, et cetera. So they're, they are two separate types of agreement.
Yeah, the biggest component difference is really the retained receipt. Like, basically, we have master agreements, participating style agreements, that are one Watershed Center to both forests and the RCD to both forests and the BLM, right? Then it says you can do everything. You could do any one of these things, plus, plus, plus. And then the supplementals are just sort of name a project, wherever it is on the forest.
Right.
We can do it tiered to that master agreement. So we had that part. We don't have the sort of retained receipts kind of sharing across the entire forest, of either forest steward sharing or the stewardship part. Yeah.
So following what you guys are saying, it sounds like you got a lot of the pieces. I was asking the, you're referring to, it was actually with Randy Moore, Barney was there. But he made it sound like we were just completely missing the boat. If we didn't have this overarching master stewardship agreement, he didn't say it had to do with the county. He just said we had to have it placed here in our, well, I recognize that you don't agree with it.
Yeah, I don't.
Record straight, but that's what he said to us. So we went away from the meeting going, oh shit, we're missing the boat. We gotta get this other thing in place. And he made it sound like he could do away with issues like we were talking about earlier, where Tom Hall wanted to go out and hire temps to do something, but because we have this master stewardship agreement, we would just immediately plug in Eric Cruz, and we would have to go through this.
And actually, he said you're administrative work, which he just said, it doesn't. So that's the position.
Yeah, so that's right. But that all gets back to the kind of the governance question, like, how are we actually sort of making decisions about where to spend the money, right? The vehicle, the agreement, it exists. You know, the question about whether we're at the table when decisions are being, how decisions are made about allocations, is the part that I think theoretically, maybe if we did have a master stewardship agreement and we named really explicitly a governance process, right? We said, and the Trinity County Collaborative Group will discuss how to use retained receipts. We could put that right into an agreement, right, into the master. It just sort of puts a step, a governance step in the road to using that money and implementing, then I think that would be novel. That would be something we're not doing today. Don't have, that we could put in a legal document that would change how we do business.
We had examples of that governance structure.
You do, exactly.
Before us.
Exactly.
So the example is, we're just not, we haven't translated that to the collaborative system.
So I don't actually, I don't think that we shouldn't do it. I just think we should talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is what we're doing.
And that's all, that's the reason we brought it up for this. We didn't completely understand that we wanted to look into it first. So you're exactly right, that you guys came away from that meeting with the sense that by entering into a master stewardship agreement, the world of challenges of bureaucracy wiped away. Administrative master agreements, the other significant difference is that a master stewardship agreement that covered the West Side, or a couple of those, would make available more, another source of money for all the project nights. So where just the master agreement that you guys have now still means you gotta find a high money that pays for that participation, you know, by a project. A master stewardship agreement would, in big enough scale, mean the pot of stewardship retained receipts would continue to be fed by lots of projects. And then when you add a need like, you know, a marketing group, you know, you could potentially say, and we're gonna use that number of dollars from that stewardship pot to get that in. And that might, that would be one difference.
It could, it could do that. They don't necessarily do that, but it could.
I don't wanna move aside of one other aspect of this. The money clearly is what makes the world go around here, but the, the other thing, though, that he was implying in this whole discussion was it would give the collaborative more authority to do business with the Forest Service, where it would be this entity and entity kind of relationship, rather than us just coming around, gee, we'd really like you to do this thing. So you would have to establish a fiduciary entity in order for the collaborative to be part of the agreement. We can only. We suggested so ours and he. With entities that are, that are established, basically in some fiduciary form, so that the agreement would likely be with the county, not with the collaborative. We were talking to RCD with the RCD. I would expect, can we do a, a, a master stewardship agreement, it would be the county, it'd be the RCD, it'd be us, it'd be.
As we were saying, as I think was mentioning earlier, that we have an master stewardship agreement level, it actually could include these groups, you know, and then the fiduciary.
It would be.
So if you have multiple groups, does each group have to approve any project that you step forward? Is that complicated more? Because supervisors, there's many more, so just to keep it simple.
That's right.
We would just say one entity and then we thought.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, exactly right. The entities under agreement all have the ability to terminate the agreement at any time. And so that's the fundamental difference between contracts and agreements is that there, there is the ability for any one of the entities to terminate that agreement whenever they choose. And so we could call it all kinds of challenges when somebody decides they're out and the rest of the entities are left about.
It very much simplifies things to have, have it, you know, like in the case of the forest, it very much is just to have us, should, we've got our separate master stewardship agreements with the Forest Service, with BLM. You know, and they're inherently guided by documents, you know, it's documented that we have the steering committee as the guiding force of how, how projects are brought to the, you know, brought to the table. Yeah, so it is adding more just adds layers of complexity, because then there's that responsibility, then that falls to a larger number of, of entities. And so it's really a matter of how.
That you want. I think that, you know, for me, they, I like the idea of something, you know, large on, associated with Trinity County. I, I would think if we were gonna do something, it would be some relationship with the, you know, the county and then others. But the, you know, I mentioned earlier around the Farm Bill, they had the neighborhood authority that, you know, now available for counties. That, that, you know, might be a preferred way to think about what kind of agreement we're wanting to get into. But it, it first comes to the place where there has to be an entity that is wanting to jump in and do this stuff with us, to pay to do it. And so it's, you know, while there's some opportunity that the revenue from, from the forest material can be used to keep the wheels moving and grease, it's still a situation where it's really about somebody saying, we wanna come do this work with you, we have a mutual interest in doing this work, and we're willing to bring resources to the table.
So if I might just enter, so we're, we're, we said we were gonna stop for lunch. I don't know how much, it seems like there's a good discussion going. Wanna continue on, delay lunch a little bit, wait for lunch, come back and finish this discussion, or just wrap it up that way?
I would recommend we close it up, but I'd like to give a little update on master stewardship. Before we leave.
But what's the next step then?
That's what I'm wondering where it goes here. You've got kind of some moving ahead.
So we can bring, so I heard that there was a subgroup that was interested in actually exploring this deeper. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So if a subgroup wants to actually take some examples of stewardship agreements at this scale, of master stewardship agreements at this scale, think about what the trade-offs could look like, and whether we wanna pursue something like this. I mean, we're on board for participating. I've got a whole library of stewardship agreements, contacts with the principals of those stewardship agreements.
You just shrunk the membership by saying I have a whole library.
Yeah, well, I mean, we gotta do our homework, right? I mean, it's, sounds compelling, but we really gotta look at the governance.
Books on tape.
Yeah, the government's kind of all the parts of this and the trade-offs, so we should just pursue that, I think.
Yeah, there are small groups set up. There's already a committee.
We do have a committee for that.
Discuss. If Scott, it would be possible that we participate in the forest level. You know, you've been involved in that.
But I can't be on your stuff. Larry, I could be invited to your meetings.
Right.
Larry and Jerry and.
I thought we'd come down. I thought we'd come down here.
And I think Larry, Jerry's was on there. So our groups are like holding. Yeah, they're typically open.
Yeah, okay. What's the name of the group?
Stewardship.
Matt.
Okay, so Joe, you had something on.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. So I have a master. Weaverville Community Forest Master Stewardship Agreement on my desk. I have it, we said the Sims are working on it, they're working with Tracy, so we should have it into grants and agreements next week.
Cool.
So that's, that's where that's at. I did look at it on Friday, actually on Thursday, yesterday, and it's not overly complicated, but I appreciate you said of bringing that to me to look at it. A little bit different from the past one. This, I believe this is the second master stewardship agreement.
That's right.
It's ten years and pretty much covers the 12,000 acres just within the Weaverville community basin. We will keep the forest just that, so.
The, the good thing about this one is that where the first one was like a first of its kind and the authorities weren't properly formatted, which is why we had such issues getting any kind of projects going in the community forest initially that would then actually result in retained receipts, and in fact, couldn't do it because what we ended up doing for Browns face two was a, again, was not a we had the master stewardship agreement, but we created a separate stewardship agreement to do that work in order to create the retained receipts, and it wasn't even connected to the master stewardship agreement. So this one will actually be tierable, which was, which means that we will actually be able to basically tier other project-specific agreements under that master stewardship agreement much more easily.
Yes.
And so that's, it's fixed the problem that we had with the first round.
Right, right.
Which I did have with BLM.
Yeah, I thought it was rather innovative, right, and I liked it, so. Anyway, the good news is we grant some agreements.
In the same, yeah, all this agreement is still active.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the moment on the master stewardship agreement?
Well, and by BLM for some reason.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, we put out a, I put out a more broad to the active members and, and agency posts, like who wants to, but I will send that to you directly, or directly if that's more appropriate.
We're gonna talk about agreements probably in the morning, or I'll have to actually have the agreements first.
I'll send you a separate email.
I still have a quick one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I got lost with the 25% non-federal match. Where does that apply? The 20% match, 20%?
Applies to every supplemental project agreement under a master agreement. So, it's just a blanket requirement and expectation. It can be negotiated, in rare instances, I've never negotiated a lower match for any reason, I'm very honored, on specific projects, like when the agency say comes at the last minute, because there's an emergency, and now we need your people, sometimes it's really hard to raise the 20% match, but that doesn't work. So, I've not figured out how to crack that, and that was part of the talk, but the basic expectation is 20% on every supplemental project agreement under a master.
We often times come in higher than anyways, but it's just because of the nature.
There's just some unique kind of instances where it's...
So, what, I think part of, so, what the watershed setting the RCD are good at is having other sources of money, grant monies, that play into those same projects, and that's where they identify their matching. And I'd also say that, you know, when the steering committee gets together to talk about, you know, let's do this project, all the people who are volunteering their time at that stewardship committee meeting, that's one of the reasons there's always signing sheets, they can go to them and say, two hours of Bob and so on, so on, so on, so on, so on, so on's time, we're just standing there working on, you know, identifying this project, that's a match.
I'd like to get a hold of the Good Neighbor Plan or Policy.
Yeah, Authority.
Authority, can you send that to me, so I can read it?
You can, I'll tell you what.
Because that's an exemption to that.
You can Google Good Neighbor Authority, and you can find the agreements that the states have, as easy as I can, I don't have to talk.
Each state has a different...
State have, states have, yeah, states have, there's a library, which is the sky. But I, yeah, you'll find it.
Okay, so, it's break time, or start a little meeting, so I know we'll start back up again a little later. We'd love to start at 1:30.
A second, his, 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 be the move. Much of that, motion for like, to have a whole meeting.
They want to start voting on things right now.
Okay, so, the regalia can...
I have to click the consent of us, and then leave.
Okay, so, we'll take you first. Okay.
Fine.
Okay, so, recollect, that we used to have an NRE committee, right, but we brought it into the recreation committee, and so, from tallying and recreating, the NRA, I think, in part because Leslie's not here, but also that, and what's going on, recreation, why, West Side, why?
Yeah, so, if you guys remember, some flights, flights, a year ago, we went under a reorganization, where my old job was abolished, and I got put into the red officer job, so we made it through the first year, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights, some of the projects we've accomplished, since we have to give these stuff done in recreation. Someone mentioned the mules are going to be in the Rose Bowl Parade again this year, which is fantastic. So, our new packer Katie is actually going to be in the parade, even though she's still working for PLM right now, while she finishes her master's degree. So, with 30 dollars last fall, we replaced a half-mile corroded pipe from the source to the tank at Tannery, so the water system is now functioning at Tannery with lovely flush toilets. We put in for additional money to redo that old distribution system, but given the state of budgets, it's unlikely we'll get that, but for now, the water system is now working at Tannery. So far this year, we've reconstructed the Clark Springs Spring Box, which provides water to Mill Creek Fire Station, Bushy Town, Minersville, Clark Springs, and the boat ramp. This is what the spring box used to look like, it was where they filled with roots, which was why it wasn't producing. So, we rented an excavator with mud out there with some firefighters, airport, their grabmaker, and some Shasta Lake folks, and they reed in the spring box, and they found that when they dug it all up, the water's still pouring water out of the hillside. They reset the spring box, got it all sealed, so it has a bacteria vapor barrier that Wes Skirner donated, and the biggest deal is it's getting over 40 gallons a minute, which means we can fill the 20,000 gallon tank, Paul's going to do the math, I don't know, in about nine hours. So, we currently were spending $3,000 a month shipping water to the fire station, because we have firefighters that live out there and work out there. Now, we're going to have money, or now, we're going to have that extra money, hopefully in the pot, but we're going to have water for the fire station, and Bushy Town has flush toilets, it has a shower, it has power, springs, has flush toilets, as long as there's water in the lake, which we can't help. The flush toilets, the branded flush toilets in Clark Springs will be operational, so this is a huge deal for our program, to get water to there.
Is the water for the fire station, you have to treat that, too?
All the water's treated up the tank, but because our crazy packers drank this water, they were just dripping, it was coming out the hillside.
How many years was it?
Right now?
When did you get that, when did you do the test that you had Tony Allen?
Oh, we don't know, 40.
40, that's an anger, oh, well, that's a huge deal.
Yeah, so, this is a huge deal for us, we had gone through a lot of rain, and it was still producing all that water.
It was, you know, we really didn't have the charge, and we can't, and I ain't charged four cars, we didn't have them.
Jeremy, you guys talked about it in the recreation video tonight, and having drinking water is huge, these facilities, and they all have flush toilets, so without that, we're essentially closed, we have quarter bobbies, not places you want to go recreating. So, this, both the Tannery project and the Clark Springs project were funded with 30 dollars, so that's money that was collected on our unit, used on our unit, which expires 9/30/2019.
The law expires July 1.
So, anyway, that expires. I'm sure quite a few of you are interested in the progress of the Trinity Center Boat Ramp, so everything is torn up, the sidewalks are done, this should have been poured, the ramp should have been poured, and roofs, they have all the gutters poured, the bathroom should be installed, I don't know if anyone's been down there, it's supposed to happen this week.
Highway 299.
Okay.
I followed back, ready yesterday.
Okay, so, the bathroom was going to be installed this past week, but it sounds like it's going to be next week. So, they're on track to open as the Four Memorial Weekend, we had talked about wanting to do, 1.6 million dollar project on track, they, right now, there's 120 feet of ramp in the water, so they most likely won't be able to do that, since the water's not coming back up. Three or five-year contract, so as long as the water goes down at some point, we'll finish that.
Who's the contractor?
I don't know. It was bid nationally, and I don't know.
So, I know it's a company out of Reading, and it's a, leaving woman minority owned business, that's all I can remember.
So, lots of progress there. Lots of work's been happening at the Berman Bar, thanks to Carol and Pat, these are just a couple of pictures I've had, but the AVA trail, the road around the barns complete, Carol had, we're going to Maricord, put new doors or hinges on Maricord, this report, and then we got the new sign installed, and the men of Chico came, they're like a minority service group from Chico State, and, all these young guys with muscles showed up, and they put their boot rods out in the woods, and they totally built the higher elevation trail, and I loved it, so, yeah, we're cracking.
I remember.
They were fun to watch. So, I'm not sure if you've noticed, there's been a lot of new signs put around the district, trying to upgrade some of our shot-up, broken-down, half-readable signs. If you are out in the woods, and you see a sign that's not let it go, shot up, you should replace, take a picture, tell me where it is, and we'll put it on the list to give advice. So, the Weaverville Office got a new one, two new signs, and then some of our other signs are pretty faded out front. Phil Pot and Big Bar were administratively changed to picnic areas, to address some of the problems at those sites. Not sure if they're actually deterring some of the issues, hopefully they are.
Now, is Phil Pot?
Phil Pot is someone by Joseph's house.
West, it's west of Peanut, on Joe Pot.
It's right by Trinity Pines.
Where's Peanut?
So, we spoke to the public with this, we had public meetings down in Hayford and up here, and some people seemed, everyone that we talked to was supportive of that. So, that's something that we...
That's because people were living there, right?
Yes. We hired two permanent packers, I'm sure many of you know Eric Court's from Hayford, he's been a local packer here for the past nine years, and then before that, he was a private packer in the area. He's a great asset, and Katie Bardzowski will be coming from the Burns of the PLM District in May, when she graduates. She went through the COE Packer Internship Program, and will be the COE North-Southeast Packer, and then Eric will be the District Packer.
And he's a blessing.
He's everything, yes.
So, we're working with the community forest, the Trinity Trail Alliance, and other local groups, to add existing on-the-ground trails to the Weaver Basin System, reroute problem sections of trail, and then construct new sections of trail, for different reasons, but I only put the Forest Service ones on, because that's the only one I'm dealing with,
but there's other trails that we're hoping to add. Kelly might have more info on that.
We had, so, part of this was brought on by the fact that there was a desire to build a couple of new segments of trail, past that broader homestead, that would go up towards Jackass, but when we started thinking about what would have to do with DIPa, we might as well add the other already existing user trails that aren't actually part of the official system trails, because a lot of that were being utilized by the horse folks.
Lots of races are used there.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the races, there's cross-country, you know, runners and all that kind of stuff, they're already using a lot of these non-system trails, and so we figured, well, let's just include all the ones that are most likely, or most desirable to have in there, and we ended up identifying about seven and a half miles of existing non-system trails that will be included in the DIPa, and about seven miles of new trails to be built.
When we said we, it wasn't us, we had a community forest steering committee meeting, and then we also had a public committee meeting.
Yeah, we had a lot of, we had a lot of folks from the Trinity Trail Alliance that showed up at that meeting, and gave us a lot of input, and, you know, some of these are, as trail users, you know, it's nice to sort of get together, go, well, these are the needs, and these would be nice to be able to do this, and there's a ditch line up here, so why don't we just put a trail on that, and so, that was a good collaborative effort, that, you know, I think will be a good set of additions to the base of trail system.
So, we'll be starting the categorical exclusion analysis, hopefully at the start of the new year.
There's a big Disney trail that connects the Hoover Valley Road with Flex and Gap, and I can't think of the, the name escapes me.
It's not the Dolly Ditch?
Dolly Ditch, yeah, and they have a big, now, sandy bike trail, the problem is, it's a ditch, and the wilderness.
Sure does.
And I've heard there's some, this was kind of a conventional name, so talk about allowing some bike usage in wilderness, if you can do it.
I've heard whispers of that, but I haven't seen anything in writing that it's actually going to happen.
Yeah, and as it is, because it's a one-way trail, basically, going into wilderness, you can't technically ride a bike on any portion of it, even though it's, I've been up on that ditch, and it's good, and flat, and long, and wide, that burden on that thing's huge, so...
It would be a great, a great candidate, if that ever came down, like one.
Yeah, because really, all it does is connect two roads, it's not like a destination to a lake, or some sensitive area like that.
And the CCCs were actually out there clearing it after the fire this past summer, they spent about two weeks out there, working.
Technically, it is already a system trail, a base and trail supplement that never was removed, from, within that system, so it's still a viable trail, it's just a limited use because of that.
Some other things that have happened in the past year, we purchased a mini excavator and a Delta trailer, so right now, for the past year, we've been having rent mini excavators for all these water repair systems, so we're finally getting one into our fleet in recreation, which is huge, because all of our water systems are from the 1960s, and they're all corroded. We purchased new picnic tables and fire rings to be installed at Clark Springs, which is great news, since they will have water. We purchased new gates to be installed at campgrounds, these are primarily downriver campgrounds, that were getting a lot of vandalism and dumping in the winter months, so they would just be closed during the winter season. We're going to be implementing a donation program, and I'm planning to put tubes at Fish and Point River Access, and then the Wilderness Kiosk at the Weaverville Ranger Station, and all that money will stay on the unit, to purchase things that we need to maintain, the bathrooms along the river that aren't real sites, or help pay for things up in the house, new signs, things like that. And then we're going to be working with Chico State Construction Department to decommission toilets across the Trinity Side of Forest, so highest priority would probably be natural bridge, if they want that one out there, because it's an ice ore. But I think there's six toilets across the West Side that are falling down, they're not at sites that are used anymore. And then, most importantly, we're looking for new members. If you care about the wilderness packing, OHB, hiking, river, rafting, kayaking, mountain biking, trail along the river, the Ross Malino Trail, anything from Scott Mountain down to South Fork Mountain, please come, and if there's certain things that you really care about on the South Fork, we can go and visit those sites, and try and promote community workdays. It'd be really nice not to have this just be in the way.
And that was one thing that the committee really said, is we want really special membership, to include all of, you know, Forest Service, Recreation.
And not just Forest Service.
Right, not just Forest.
PLM, Jennifer wanted me to remind everybody that PLM has a recreational component in pretty much all of them.
So, she's going to start sending someone. What's up, Ross?
When will we see that mini excavator?
It should be here within the next couple of months.
Yeah, when will that physical work on the Weaver Basin Trail be almost started?
Soon as the DIPa's done.
When that ends, I like that.
I would hope that we could start in the summer. It's, it falls under a decision memo, but still, these are all mostly, if you go to the map, they're mostly existing trails that do have erosion issues, but we can't deal with the erosion issues anyways, well, we have no money, and two, they're not system trails, so bringing them into the system would actually help the problem. And then, the new trail we want to construct is primarily on Schneidbauer land, so we'll just have really simple sections to... membership to include all of your forest services, recreation.
And not just forest services.
Right, not just forest services.
Jennifer wanted me to remind everybody that CBLM has a recreational component in pretty much all of them.
So she's going to start sending someone. What's up, Ross?
When will we see that mini excavator?
It should be here within the next couple of months.
Yeah. When will that physical work on the Weaver Basin Trail be almost started?
Soon as the DIPA's done.
And is, will that be in the lifetime?
I would hope that we could start in the summer. It's, it falls under a decision memo, but still see. These are all mostly, if you go to the map, they're mostly existing trails that do have erosion issues, but we can't deal with the erosion issues anyways, well, we have no money, and two, they're not system trails. So bringing them into the system would actually help the problem. And then the new trail we want to construct is primarily on Schmidtbauer land. So we'll just have really simple sections to analyze new construction on. The rest is just bringing existing trails into the system. I would hope it would not take more than three months. But right now, we're down a wildlife biologist, we're down a fisheries biologist, and Lowell, our archaeologist, has been on a detail. And two other forest archaeologists are on maternity, fraternity duty, so.
So if we start the trail on Schmidtbauer land, by the time we get to the forest, it should be ready?
Sounds good. We got the letter from the mill that says that they fully support the plan and we're moving forward on our side.
All right. You want to have a meeting about trails on South Fork, so we don't. I'll get people that are interested. We can't keep coming over all the time.
And that's why, if we're talking about South Fork trails, that doesn't mean South Fork. Yeah. If you want to reach out to them and find a day, February, January, February, I'd love to come down.
Isn't there somebody from Watershed Center?
Tom Evans. Be the one.
Help maybe coordinate that.
Coordinate that. They've been doing a lot of OHB restoration on trails down on the South Fork.
And trying to scare OHB signs off the places where OHBs aren't supposed to be.
I would, part of that is finding a place for them to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's carrots and there's sticks.
I don't have a lot of sticks right now. There's law enforcement, it's something.
Do you ever install boulders or anything at the beginning of the trails to stop? And there's no signage that says, "Don't ride your OHB on the street."
They do. They have, the Watershed Center's been installing the carcinite signs that say like, "No motorized, horses okay, bikes okay." They're going to do what they want. They're definitely going to. The signs keep on spooking out. That's it.
Well, that's helpful because some of the people out running to like the Rockville Street, they had no idea that we're supposed to be riding bikes because there's so many, there's such a deep rut in trailer, people using bikes, they just thought that's what was going on.
And that's one of the trails that Watershed Center's been restoring. And that's with California OHB sticker. I'm on OHB rider. Anyway. So when they restore, they didn't sign it afterwards? I think they signed it right when they were there. And then they sent us guys.
I mean, it'd be awesome if that trail event, at the top of it, you drove some big boulders and sent them across the trail. That would be still a town.
I don't know exactly that trailhead, but a lot of dirt bikers just find another way to go. It's not.
Yeah, there's a choke point there, it'd be pretty tough if you had some big rocks.
Anyway, participate. We'd like you to.
So if you, if you're going to get a meeting set up for the South Fork, we can, you know, tell them, send an email out, let it go. Okay, thank you. Cannabis committee, what have you guys got?
So, in South Fork, there was a money funding. It affected, there was not money enough to continue with the cannabis committee meeting after the last meeting, although assuming that this was going to be considered a hand meet again. I also asked, Scott, while he was here, if the Forest Service has a pot of money for cannabis restoration? And he said, "No, it doesn't." But they've been looking for money specifically for that. And as you recall, at the last meeting where we did have Dr. Greta Weigert from the Interblow Collage Research Center, explained to us some of the awful impacts of trespass roads on public lands. She also was willing to be helpful with some of our questions later. And as you probably saw in the community journal, the Department of Fish and Wildlife does have access to some funds for that. And they recently funded a nine-site cleanup that was flooding on this. It included Greta's team and her friends specifically doing the statistics, the research side of the research on it, about eight groups. And they did cover around six miles of irrigation pipe used very often to divert water to their, their play there grows, as well as over 13,000 pounds of trash. It took 33 helicopter loans to remove it, to give you some idea of what's involved in cannabis restoration. So hopefully this will be continuing and hopefully it better be clean. And Carol from the start, Carol's also in there, and Larry, Wes, are on the committee. And Carol, from the beginning, has been urging and entrustment in using GIS and some of the other modern technology to map the trespass roads. And Kelly is in, Dr. Greta said that they're working on it and they could be helpful. And Kelly also, as we probably all know, is a real wist kid, a little bit comes to that kind of technology. But unfortunately, there's a money delay right now too with that. But that's the process. Is if you wanted to be, show a comment on that?
I previously talked about the potential of doing some modeling, imagery modeling that would actually help identify both sites. And that, my technician has done some of that work and had sort of less than optimal success at it. So he's actually working with some of the development team at the SRI, is the company that actually produces the software that we use for GIS to try to refine the modeling that he's using to do that. So as of right now, it's, we have been quite successful in being able to model that way. But I know that he's also been trying to do modeling mining tailings, which is also creates certain patterns on the landscape. So he's had a little more success with that. So we're cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to get something that's kind of more useful than would be working on with Greta Murat and actually some other folks to free that technology forward. Yes.
Do you have access to the thermal imaging satellite data?
We do not currently have access to that. The data that we'd probably be using is from a company called Digitalvlog, which is updated much more, I think, almost daily or something like that. But it's, this is something that the county was actually looking into and I reported that to this group previously, that they were looking into it. I'm not sure that they're actually going to go down that road because it's actually a fairly expensive subscription.
I was going to say, Hubble County Planning Department apparently subscribed to that and they've been having a great deal of success.
Exactly. Is that right?
Yeah.
I'll have to have, I'll have my technician inquire with them, but I actually notice some of the GIS books over there. So that'd be just a good tip, so we can clarify this thing.
When you say modeling, I mean, with that program in Hubble, that's not only modeling, it's a, there's actual science.
They combine, well.
My idea of modeling is.
But if you, if you're looking over hundreds of square miles of stuff, you need the modeling to narrow out where you're going to look. So, so it's a combination of both things where they use the modeling and narrows down where they live with the terrain, then they live, then they, then they spot. And they spot the pipes too. I understand pipes give off a different signature than the western landscape. There's water in it, there's different.
And so, you know, just depending on news from law enforcement.
No.
Tells you where the sites are that they've lost.
No, the, what, what my technician was trying to do was actually do this from aerial, like really up-to-date aerial imagery that would be high resolution, that would be looking for specific patterns from the sky, which, some of the trespass roads are going to be more difficult to, because they're undercamping to identify in those areas, but, you know, that's not optimal growing, you know, they want to have as much direct sunlight as possible. So, so a lot of times, just the pattern for the growth themselves are not, you know, it's a matter of like training or modeling the computer to actually identify those patterns as being something different than the surrounding landscape.
And are we working with law enforcement or will we be? Are we at that level places?
Yeah, we would be. I mean, this is sort of all.
A beginning stage.
It's, it's kind of a, you know, a scholastic kind of exercise at this point, just to see if it's even possible. But, you know, this is, was originally driven by conversations between my technician and the planning department's gross site, you know, grow, like, you know, like certification people and all the folks at the planning department and the Weaver Basin, just in general. Because they wanted to sort of begin to identify who's certified and who's not, and where the gross sites are, because it's all tied back to land, you know, private parcels and all that stuff. But it would end up being unfavorable to public property as well.
Very, I do want to say, very right from the start, from the very concern about the water, which we all are, of course, is something that Greta brought out that was pretty, is very, very sort of horrifying and saddening to me, is that the trespass growers and themselves are poisoning everything from lettuce to raw meat to cover all the kinds of animals because all the animals in one way or another are a threat to their crop. And of course, that goes into the water very often.
It's also wildlife that I was just downplaying on through presentation.
Yes.
Like tulip, the tin quail, everything that's on the darn food chain, everything out there, every species somewhere along on the number is dying from the poisoning and the herbicides and pesticides. I mean, that's where I'm at, and that's back in Watershed. It's totally out of control on these roads. That's kind of where I'm at, and then to do it, to potter the rest of it, it's like, it's just the poisoning of the land and the animals. Just kind of nature, that's what I just added. Back on your other question too, since we've been trying to do this now, and I've gone to here, on having various agencies and law enforcement come and address it. We've been trying to do that, and I'd say Greta still may, and they're not adding to come to us, and they're not going to anyway. It's like top secret, everything they think to do and you can find out faster on Facebook before they arrive or the lights. But maybe we'll, we'll see some kind of a beginning and end on that too. Someone's got to step up.
So anything else for the cannabis committee? I looked up for Greta to raise her hand, just to stretch out her dorn. Larry?
Just wanted to say that Dan, Bill had told me that his district and his forest plans to be much more aggressive in this coming year. They're going to, they particularly are taking the exception to the county granting permits for people that involve using federal, the federal road system to do their.
How was that? That's on Eleanor? The Eleanor side or?
Six rivers.
Six rivers.
The six rivers.
Six rivers, pardon, yeah.
Good for him.
Okay. Okay, but moving right along then, so we're into updates of three organizations, of which only one is here. Do you have any new NRCS?
I did hear a report from Janet Goff, the district conservationist here in Weaverville. So I'm going to just read through this real quickly. Just with regard to staffing and agency updates, they're still waiting for a certificate on NRCS GS 9/11 forester position, which closed apparently on October 9th. So you can fill that position at, Carrie Nichols, Forester here locally in Weaverville, is now working part-time through a, as their forester through a resource conservation development council grant, agreement that they have with NRCS. I guess it's like part of the TSB program probably. They've got a new state archaeologist, Estano, who started on November 11th, working on, keep working on renewing an agreement with the state historic preservation office to facilitate streamlining, giving conservation on the ground. NRCS Farm Bill program updates. Currently acting on a two-week extension of Farm Bill, expires December 21st. But a bill was expected to be passed, which was.
Senate approved it.
Senate approved it. The conservation stewardship program, which pays part of landlords to conduct conservation enhancements on their property, including forest land, was up for debate, as expected, is expected to survive this Farm Bill. They had two sign-up periods for equipment and the RCPP program, which is the old restoration program, and Joint Chiefs since the last piece of collaborative meetings. So I guess they had two people sign up for their programs. Yeah, so it says fiscal year 2019 funding programs, Joint Chiefs, they got one, one project in the process of $4,500 and then IQ Forestry project, three different ones, including sites, site visits following the Cal Fire, two requested forest management plans completed by a timber company on the cloud. And for the fiscal year 2019 submitted applications, plans for December, September matching period, there's two more forest health and fire resiliency programs under Joint Chiefs for $2,100, or $22,000, and then RCPP program, which is again, our restoration program, they've got, there's three separate ones for $179,000, helping with Dave's car meeting and RPF from Watershed Center. So they got 14 current, currently active contracts.
And that's that.
Okay. And then for the RCE, we are submitting a $430,000 for fire prevention grant that's due next week through this, the Cal Fire CCI program, which is their new greenhouse gas program, which would, we're hoping to get a couple of new trucks to replace some very old trucks that we've got, as well as probably $350,000 worth of on-the-ground projects. Most of it is in the North Lake area, Myersville, Ridgeville, Long Canyon, Lake Forest Estates, and one or two other locations, I believe, up that way. And then it also has a stretch of treatment that would be along the highway. We, I guess, have been working very closely with Caltrans on some of our other re-vegetation projects that were mitigation for the slides, Big French Creek, Slate and Collins Bar, sorry. And through those, we've been discussing with them whether or not they would like to have, you know, a stretch of the highway, you know, some, some fuel production down along the westernmost portion of 299, which they were very liable to. So, so we included the funding to actually do fuels treatments along the highway and with the hope that we could get just outside of, you know, their standard right-of-way into some private property and some, some forest service property in that stretch. So that's part of that private as well. We're also applying a position that went, which was posted yesterday and will be in the Journal this next week, for a forest health project coordinator position, that would hopefully take all of the fuels and forest-related work off of our, our re-veg coordinator, who's been handling both jobs for.
who's been handling both jobs for a couple of years now. So, um, looking primarily for somebody who has more of a forestry background, an RPF would be fantastic, but would be, you know, somebody that would basically be able to take that project, that program and run with it, because we're wanting to step up from having basically one fuels crew to two fuels crew, crews next year. So we just need somebody that can really focus on that particular program. So that will be closing in Jan, on January 11th, so hopefully we'll get somebody in position prior to this next field season. I think that's all I have today. And I know the Watershed Center is also working on a grant proposal for that same climate change initiative through CalFire, um, you know, for the other side of the hill that they have.
Oh, yeah, one other thing. I'm all, I'm actually actively working with a grad student named Posely Welsh, who is doing her master's in forestry, the Berkeley School of Forestry, studying, uh, she's, she's done papers on the Weverville community forest. And so she approached us about a year and a half ago and did some work this past summer for us on the community forest with Kenneth Baldwin. And this next year, we're, we're actually going to seek some funding through the forest health research, through CalFire, through CalFire grant, grant funding to do some work. Inventory primarily the BLM, uh, expanded BLM grounds, the 2,300 extra acres in BLM that really hasn't been touched since the, the re-upping of our master stewardship agreement in 2016. So, um, we're gonna probably be looking for enough funding for her and for an assistant and, and for not only doing actual on-the-ground work, but doing some modeling and forest analysis into the fall of next year. So we're probably gonna shoot for about $50,000 or $60,000 worth of funding to do that, which would be pretty exciting, because BLM, you know, just hasn't had the, you know, we haven't been able to get out on the ground and deal with it, and sort of down the road up there. It's about time that we could catch some, some focus on that, that part of the community forest. So I'm excited to work with Posely and see if we can actually get some funding for it. She's gonna be doing it one way or another, and she's got some other grant funding opportunities, but this would be, would allow us for a lot of thorough into our, to about 2,300 acres and an expansion of the, um, permanent plots that were laid out by Kenneth Baldwin, uh, of a crew in 2004, before the forest was even a forest, so, um, we'll, we'll see how that goes and keep you updated, because that, that, uh, grant proposal is coming in January 21st, so. And we should be hearing from them fairly soon after that, I think, like, or something like cable or something, so it'll be timely.
Yeah. Okay. Larry?
Yeah, so I think she's affiliated, she's the girlfriend of one of the family members of Bar 717.
That's correct. They actually spent a bunch of time working on Bar 717 this past summer, and then she also was working with us while she was here on some of the community forest work.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, it was, it was really cool to meet them both. So hopefully that'll all, that'll all play well for her benefit and ours as well.
Dick, were you raising your hand or just scratching your head?
Head position.
Okay. Anything else for Kelly? Guys, also, I think you and Watershed Center also were just awarded grants from the California Fire Center.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
I thought I was tracking this.
Yeah, we got something like $70,000 to do work, and I believe most of that was for work in the Weaver Basin, Houston, Dallas city areas.
What type of work?
Uh, rosehead fuels reduction and some, this is all tied back to CWPP projects, it's all on private land.
The fuels crews, um, will not be available until they start back up again?
Our, our crews will be laid off as of this, this coming Thursday, on the 20th, it'll be their last day, and then it will just depend on whether it's this next, you know, usually it's about mid-March that we bring them back up and give them back up and running. So, like I said, I'm hoping to have a forest health project coordinator in position at that point, so that we can then start getting, filling out another crew, and we've already sort of got a plan of how we're gonna, sort of break up the institutional knowledge that we have in the, in the crew now, and start trying to get twice as much work done. So that's, that's exciting, so.
Okay. If nothing else for Kelly, then kind of our, we're getting down to concluding business. We're kind of, we're kind of our way down. This is an opportunity for all the comments, if there's anything, if you have any comments, probably issues, the issue's not on the agenda, then facilitation team has a moment or two, and then agenda building. Anything? Yes? I'll get your attention. Okay. Uh, okay. You got something to add?
My mother just died, which I'm so sorry.
So, uh, okay, so do you have anything from the facilitation side of things?
The only thing that I have is just that we needed to address the coordination.
Yeah, that'd be, you know, the agenda building, probably, okay?
And I just wanted to make a general statement, the, this had to do with, you know, the fortunate timing and the car fire kind of taking over every, you know, all the resources of a lot of the agency folks. The intent, as I had said in the email that I sent out, the agenda, we have an hour committee meeting that we need to get put together. I've been trying to minimize the amount of expenses that we've been absorbing, so until we get the facilitation dollars in order, but once that happens, then we'll be looking at getting a cannabis committee meeting, another rec committee meeting, master stewardship agreement committee meeting, and something pretty important. But all that stuff's gonna be coming, I'll also be getting, at that point, a lot of backlog and paperwork done, um, uh, collective memories and minutes for some of the subcommittees that have happened over the fall and whatnot, just to get all that stuff sort of caught back up, so I'm just waiting for all that to happen. Once that, once that agreement is in place, then, and that modification's in place, then there'll be a lot more activity as we're moving into this next year.
So do you know what the glitch is between the two forests and the agreement? It sounds like money's there.
The money's finally been allocated, so the, the issue really was, is that we started talking with them in June about this, and they made a formal request for modification to include additional funding in July, and then by, you know, within a week or two after that request, the car fire started, and now, and all that's were off at that point. We finally got a financial plan to them in August, at which point they said with fire barring, there was no way to allocate funding for it, and completely waited until October 1st, and, you know, when the new fiscal year had begun, which we did, and now that's two, you know, two months past. And part of it was, you know, I also inquired, I think the thing that's made it more complicated is just the fact that I've also requested a significant little chunk of money from the Six Rivers to, you know, to add additional time for us to be able to do facilitation of, you know, at least two other new subcommittees. And so the Six Rivers had to allocate their funding, Sustance Team had to allocate their funding, and now they're basically trying to put all this together into an existing agreement that's already in place, and looking to the machinations of having the funding coming from two forests into that one pot of money.
Is it just a one-year agreement?
This is about one year's worth of funding, yes.
A multi-year agreement, the funding comes every year.
Yeah, the agreement, the agreement's a five-year agreement. Started in, I think it was the 9th of August of 2017, so we're, you know, now into our second year of the agreement. It's just that they built it in such a way that it would basically, they'd have to do modifications for, uh, uh, reallocating new funding for, for that work. And that just means I need to start asking for it earlier.
As soon as you get an agreement. I'm running for Congress, you just, as soon as you get a light, then you gotta start working on it again.
So, in, in good faith, we've been continuing to do this because it's important work and it's, you know, we, you know, we want to have a lot of continuity going forward, so, um, you know, it's, it's not anybody's fault, it's just kind of the timing of it and when, you know, everything that's had to happen in order to get all of the work done.
I think a further complication is if the grants agreement person at the forest retires, like next week. So, always, always something. So the only thing I had from the facilitation is kind of anticipated schedule for meetings in 2019. If we continue with the pattern that we've been using of every other month, our next meeting would be February 15th, you know, and then April and June, you know, third, third Friday, so unless I hear otherwise, that's kind of how we're gonna, we're gonna lay ourselves out. I think it's, it's the 15th, because the first Friday of the month is the first. So unless, unless somebody says do otherwise, then that would be the schedule that will continue. Our February meeting would be in Cape York, then April back here in Weverville. So, that's kind of the general, general schedule for, and that's all I got from the facilitation side of things, okay? Yes, because the team, you know, there's, the last big item is, what items do we want on the agenda for February? Right, I mean, Dan?
Okay, I have several I hope you will consider. The first one...
Go slow.
Okay, I'll try. Talk to me a piece of, but anyways, um, the first thing is that people should have an exploratory committee to look at restabilizing our fire lookouts. They were a time-honored act, um, resource, um, that really worked, and we laid them down, let them get decrepit, not only did it help with fire detection quick, I, I've had spoken to many of these old timers that actually did it, and they said that they often actually went and put the fire out themselves before anybody could get there. The other thing is if we have people out in the fields like that again, um, they can also see the kind of, um, activity with the trespass growers, people going in, and like, hey, look at that, loose trucks going in, because they gotta bring supplies in, okay, possible. So I thought that would be kill two birds with one stone, and we should look into that. I think we have an administration that might be open to that, it's jobs, we could have veterans actually getting these jobs and these fire lookout, um, jobs, I think that would be good, we might, so I think we should have an exploratory committee for that.
Okay, stop, we'll, we'll do one thing at a time, kind of see where, where they go. So, just as someone had just commented, so to kill two birds with one stone, I'm not sure what kind of need for that requires, but anyway, no, just kidding. So what, what, what area, if the facility is kind of standard?
Well, I know, what I mean is restore them or rebuild them.
So the question's not to debate now, but whether or not this group wants to have an agenda item in February to talk about that. John?
So my knowledge on, on lookouts is the state has one bully shoot, which they staff during periods of extreme fire danger, and then they got the balance of the time they leave it unstaffed. Um, that's the state for private, protecting private lands, but the federals have several of them, because for Orlando, they're still staffing them.
Yeah, the Anza King?
Yeah, Fire Mountain, yeah, that's your...
The decommissioned?
Forest Ridge. I'm not so clear with yes, if you, then they have something that's not staffed.
So I, I don't know where you're coming from about lookout.
I know somewhere decommissioned, but I was looking at somewhere.
So would one possibility be just to have a report from the agencies on the status of staffing of lookouts?
And what, and what do... Fire ignition detection period.
Yeah, fire detection, okay, that's what they're doing.
And again, the possibility of then expanding their job to actually reporting on this kind of trespass grow activity, I'm talking there, is they're not invisible. You can follow where they go, body, and now, and so far that they're coming anywhere.
Barry? And then Susie?
Yeah, back on agendas, and I like the, uh, the very just held here word that from Sporkum.
Fire detection.
Because, like I say, on those lookouts, I remember when we replaced, replaced this one, because I banded the new metal one in 1990, got four men sick from chromate that were eating on steel, that I was gonna say, anyway, I don't think that needs to be agendized. We did address it, I think even during the summer, that I asked Joe, a bunch of how old he was being a man, he answered in your district, what was being man was and what wasn't, so it's, it's being addressed, I don't know that we need to agendize. On the second part of it, I'm not having anything to do with having the lookouts or anybody else getting legally involved on checking out who's kind of going on, you know, if it grows or bashing or not wanting this.
Okay, so again, without debating the issue now, is whether or not...
I just like this research, because we did have a neighbor who was a pilot, and Joe might know, um, and he daily, he was kind of daily to fly the area for fire starts, so in the fire service.
Yeah, we have him constantly.
And some of that was going out even on Facebook, it's in the public tube, which is...
That's all right. We don't care.
Over arc, fire detection.
How are they determining?
So he's got the right wording, if you're sitting on it, John.
So could we have a report on that, of what they're doing for that type of detection overall?
Okay, so take them out. Everybody in favor of that, raise their hand. A report?
Clarify, a report from the floor, sir.
Maybe I'll, I'll keep several ones.
Yeah.
CDF.
Okay, so that's on, so fire detection report.
Kind of fire detection strategy.
Strategy scans.
Good, good, that's a nice one.
And communicate that to CDF, and maybe they have something to write, and they can send, they can send it to person.
Yeah, I have a recollection, actually, that, uh, the very large utility company housing, you know, with headquarters in San Francisco actually helped pay to keep some fire lookout open, this, in Portland, but they did. Okay, so before you do another one, do we have other people that have potential agenda items?
So at the last meeting, um, I talked about the letter that the Trinity Center CSD sent to Caltrans, um, encouraging them to do more fuel reduction along the state highway, and I asked Kelly to post it on the fire looksite for the group to look at, which she did, and so, um, I was wondering if we wanted to put on the agenda, considering having a collaborative, you know, send a similar letter to the forest supervisor in the center of Caltrans, you know, to kind of encourage, really encourage Caltrans to do more fuel reduction along the highway from a collaborative standpoint, not just from a tiny CSD, so.
Do you mind if I recall a bit of that, a little bit? I, I mentioned, I don't mean to distract from it, just, this is, this sort of support the, the idea. My understanding is, because like I was saying earlier, we're actually applying for some funding to do some work along the, the western portion of 299, um, Caltrans has been very open to this idea of getting, of getting work done on their, on their rightaways, but that's not something that they typically fund, and so it's hard for them to actually acquire funding to, or prioritize, prioritize funding for fuel production along their highway.
We need to kind of maybe say that, that you guys need to, with the state budgets or whatever, when you're funding, so you need to spend sort of your money, because the CalFire's that's far along the, the highways, right? So you, you need to, you need to have something in your books, you know, the RCD that does So you, you need to, maybe you have something in your books, you know, RCD to do work, whatever. I just think we're working together, like they did their, their, and they're in part of it, and RCD, like take it a little further in or something to work together.
And that's kind of what we're, we're hoping towards, but what we were actually acquiring with them, it's not been a priority for them, even given all the fact that, you know, like the car fire was starting to get, situations like that.
Well, and so I just want to shift the dialogue a little bit away from, let's get a grant and let's do the work for CSD, I mean for Caltrans, because I got the grant from California Fire Foundation to do the fuel reduction along Highway 3 and Trinity Center, but Caltrans let us do that. Thank you very much for letting us spend money on your progress.
Exactly.
You know, and so to say, I'd like to shift the dialogue more towards Caltrans. You have certain responsibility to fund and do fuel reduction along the highways.
So John. If you drive down I-5 south between Reading and Reslov, if you look off to the side of the rightaway, you'll see where there's a bare area scraped typically along the edge of the rightaway. That's put in and maintained by inmates for a fire break. In other words, they completely remove the fuel. That used to be done on 299 between, oh, I don't know, French Gold and Reading when, when there was a crystal creek camp. And so that's something we could bring back for protecting, you know, at least the uphill side of 299, which is, you know, more at risk than say the river side. So, I mean, there are things that can be done.
Diane.
Definitely supportive of that idea. It's just a letter, people. It's just a letter. Talk about it, vote on it, ask the board to do it. It's not, it's not a lot of, that was another project, so I think we should try it.
Anybody else?
Can we, before that, put it on the agenda with an invite?
Well, we would definitely make sure that Caltrans-
We know, we know who they are, they just love to come and, and then we can have them address what they might need to improve the progress.
Sounds good.
Okay, so everybody in favor of an agenda item for having a letter, a potential letter? That's right, you two, you're two people. She gets two, too. Don't get two.
I thought it was an invite.
Yeah, well, invite Caltrans.
Yeah, okay. That was a manless.
Pretty much.
Oh, you got proxies, that's why you guys are bringing that.
Yeah.
Come on, let's get out of here, don't we?
So other, other agenda items? Diane, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I was gonna bring this up, and then it happened to be up there on one of the presentations on the, the master, what was it? Storage, thank you. That classroom county has a biomass utilization program. I'd like us to look at that and see if we can incorporate that here. I think that's one of the ways that we can get rid of all these ground fuels without having to burn it, you know, just burn it and not get any energy off of it. So I'd love to see that, if we could look at that, what they did and see if we could incorporate that in our county, if we can follow that. You know, it's the elements of it.
But they're funded from the Sierra Nevada, they're treating, you know, biomass tools and how is it that they look at that? And it's, it's pretty much funding source that we don't, we can't access.
But maybe we'll find somebody. We need to look and see, well, the thing is, why was that bond issue and then there was the... Well, maybe, maybe our county could go for a pardon issue like that, because it's a state bond issue.
Okay, one person.
That's again, sorry. Just had to schedule it.
Joe, as you were saying, that I'm very familiar with this county, Jonathan Kuzel, you know, Jonathan Kuzel, and see if he can come on tab, because they were very successful to prove time. I think it took about five, eight years to get a small biomass plant, probably familiar with it, but it can be done and they even succeeded in it, so there's precedence.
And I know it takes a long time, it's particularly hard in California, but we have to find out what to do with all this biomass that we collected.
So Joseph, Jonathan knows everything, he's been to start and finish line.
Joseph, and back to Carol.
Well, some of us have been looking at this for the last 15, 20 years, and because of the haul distances here, it just doesn't work, because you can't haul stuff that has no, no commercial value pretty far. They just cost too much money. So the, the only ticket that's gonna work for Trinity County is mobile biomass plants. They can be moved from old mill site to old mill site temporarily where they're there for six months or a year. Ahead of that, you have the loggers go in and clear all the stuff that needs to be biomass within a short haul distance. The problem we run into is, is the air quality. There are, they're using these mobile plants in Oregon, in California, none of them would meet the air quality standards, so that's the holdup. But that's the only kind of biomass project that's gonna work here, is something that we can get the plant close to the fuel.
So Carol, then Larry, then Susan.
Oh yeah, so the, for, you know, I started on the university's biomass utilization task force, and we looked for, you know, since 2005, all biomass utilization options. And Joseph's right, I mean, all options available to us, you know, the cogent plants, the fire wheels, the pelletizing, you know, firewood pellets, I mean, we looked at all of that, and none of them pencil out financially because of the business, they have to haul the material. You know, look at the watershed center, they've tried a lot of these, and it works for, well, they have a grant, while they have the financial subsidy, and then it dies. And the same thing, I've looked at the classroom county, biomass utilization projects, and financially, the only reason that those still function is because they have this funding source, external funding source. So I just think for those of you that, you know, haven't been here as long and discussing as long, it's just kind of like, hey, Joe, who all over again, just that I keep talking about this and it doesn't work.
Larry, Susan.
What I remember is watershed center did some studying on modular pellet kind of factory plants where you, you're adding value to the products, you have, you have a short haul and you get out of that, the old mill sites around the county, short haul with the main stuff, and then you're shipping off pellets. And I don't know how the numbers crushed out, but this year I-
It never did.
You never, you never did.
Well, and then should we expect them to, the numbers to crunch out, right? Because, you know, we're doing this work anyway, we're paying money to burn the fuels, how, how, how much would it be different?
Susan.
And next, basically a question, Joe.
Sure.
And there is for Jonathan Kuzel, said to this colleague, which is similar to this colleague, or anyways-
In some ways, yeah.
Afterwards, we're talking about family, but you'll know, and just they were successful without outside money, or you don't, you know?
Lots of outside money.
Would you please?
Susan, tell us about that. Yes. But I think the haul, I think the discussion is sometimes you need a subsidy to take, because the haul is your biggest variable in cost. And so we have B cap, we have tier one, tier two, tier three, and I'm not gonna go there too much, but those are subsidies in many ways. They incentivize the haul, the distance, in which to make this profitable. But, you know, someday, we're not gonna have these, we're not gonna have these tier ones, you're not predictable. So yes, you're right, that there needs to be some sort of ass to stand on its own.
Well, and the other thing is, partly because the watershed center five, what they didn't work was because they couldn't get the trees off the forest or the ground.
Reliable.
And yeah.
Or a liable source of material.
I see it was a liable source.
I was just gonna say, the watershed center actually continues to have a lot of fingers in the biomass issues statewide. I think there's, I think we have a staff person, is a remote staff person that I have met, that may even be the chair of the state task force. Nick spends a lot of time working on biomass. The watershed center has a little stake in the first, well, the most recent biomass, small biomass facility, it's in North Fork, which is down in the Dura County, I think, in the Sierras. And so Nick is, is typical Nick self about facts and figures and what works and what, who knows what and what's, what the challenges are. And so I don't know, I don't have a way to compare him to Jonathan Kuzel, who I've met for a long time, but either of those guys could at least sort of give us a half hour picture of where things are at, where what's homeless, what, you know, what, what we're working to answer that. And I don't know how to proceed, except to kick off a conversation, volunteer day.
Well, one of the, one of the routes that we could go with is if we think these portable plants would be an answer for Trinity County, maybe we should ask the board supervisors to write to the air quality board and ask for a variance for this type of operation within Trinity County. And then, you know, again, it's the haul distance, so it's the only way it's gonna work, is move it around where the fuel is. And if the county is asking for a variance with, you know, all the explanation of, do you want to see it in a wildfire or do you want to see it in a control burn? You know, maybe the board can write, the board can tell, you know, we need help.
I love that idea.
So I was just gonna second Joseph's motion, and one of the biggest impediments that we heard from the people trying to do the work earlier today was air quality, getting their air quality permit. So, you know, inviting maybe the north coast of air quality, Manchester in, to see, so we can understand where they're coming from and what their restrictions are, and maybe they'll start to have some sympathy on us. Now, you know, we exist and that really our bigger risk is not the smoke from the control burn, it's the smoke from the wildland fire. That's really the much bigger threat to us.
Joe, and then Barry.
Yeah, I just real quick, I would propose that we, we talk to Kuzel, like, in a collaborative meeting, or maybe on a meeting like that.
That'd be great.
What the processes are, the experience.
Barry.
Yeah, I'd go back with the suggestion to have it agendaized, maybe have a, and then compress it, go from there.
I'm not gonna be saying that, because we're, we're, we've been there again.
But this is the new day.
We had five years, we tried it five or six years, did the watershed, but that when it closed, eight fourth mill, we ran into soul, didn't have problems back with the county, the state. And here we are again, it's biomass, it's an alternative energy, et cetera. Like I say, next thing through it, and I would say put it on the agenda to have a discussion before you start drawing in all these other people and we get excited, we're gonna go into another two, three year battle to haul biomass to.
I think certainly this will, the mill is something I could do.
Yeah, the mill had a grant from the state.
They could meet half of the issues back to trade and just-
I believe U D's probably looked into it.
We participated in the mill, the mill, the plant, the plant that was, it's worth $60, all kinds of time, and just, you can't get any, the mill can't like, you know, they could be a five million dollar plant, but half of the supply, they're raised, and they super, you know, count on a liable supply of forests to make that count as, if they can't do it, yeah, it's impossible, it's pretty close.
No, I meant the way the same thing, I didn't mean to put it like-
I mean, we, we, we partners or, or, or all of them are saying extensively, they want to support the transition. Now, how they can cut out, and just, it's really, it's very, it's almost like all the garbage, I would say that.
Diane, and then we're gonna, we're gonna-
Yeah, but we made good stuff out of our, all kinds of stuff, probably, plenty of reading. And so I think it's the new day, because we had a catastrophic fire, we've been reading, and the whole nation saw, all the way up the chain to the very top, and we're to do management, stop the fires, get the fuels off the forest floor. So I, so I think that we have a new day, we need to try again, which is, if it didn't work, because they have now seen what we saw in the 1930s, a catastrophic, catastrophic fire, they can't get it out running. We need to do something instead of have excuses.
I agree, the unconscious is normal, but we need to, you know, deal with the forests and all that extra biomass in the air. But this sounds silly, we will cut the fuel ration budget, five hundred and fifty dollars, so, the fairness is there, but I'm trying to think, I guess, financially, why?
Okay, so we're gonna have a, an agenda item on biomass utilization. Which pieces, uh, which ones is, just Nick's up. I think, I think, you know, last, maybe if you guys say have a discussion, then we'll figure out the rest we can get, the rest of it, because it is pretty complicated. You know, after I'm done standing up here, I'll give you my opinion, you know, what I've seen in Trinity County. Barry, all in favor of an agenda item? Do you have to do the official?
You getting Judy's?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, could be biomass utilization slash smoke management. I think, I mean, you get into, we're also talking about the car fire, it must be a lot bigger. Yeah, depends on how, how many, how late, you guys wanna see your figure for it? Yeah. I mean, the, the air quality issues, so you, biomass is under, but that thing also slow man, it just gets to be, to me, that gets to be pretty big, that can't skin pretty big.
First fire is what we're, we're doing now, biomass is something in the future that we'd like to do, so we've got a tool we can do now, Monday, it's future.
So that was 11 out of what's our total?
This majority.
It's gotta be two thirds.
Eighty percent.
Well, I have to find out how many people are against, then you have, how many are against?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It's not eighty, it's not, I have, you know, it's not eighty. So it's not an agenda item.
That's a point of order, I still question eighty percent requirement to have something to put on the agenda.
We decided on time with the term.
We already did a couple of years.
We need to change the charter.
I don't know, consider charter.
It is, they did the charter.
To the agenda or something?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Also, I think that would be, the county may, but I don't think they have the charter.
So Diane.
I have, I have a more, bear with me. Yeah, I spoke about this before, I'm bringing it up again, utilizing browsers and grazing herds, both domestic and-
So one of the things though that we do have is that once we voted on it, it's been voted on.
Well, that was just a wild horse, just to have a presentation. This is where a plan to basically grow our browsing and grazing herds, both domestic, you can be cattle, et cetera. And there's all types of things that we utilize to keep our, our grasses down, our brush down, et cetera. The state itself even uses this, this program. So I'm wondering if we could discuss that and see, and not only that, but build our herds up. I think that we have actually neglected our, our lands, our meadows for our herds that they need, deer, what have you, but I think that we should work on that. When I was working with the land on the project in Grass Valley, I proposed that on the site, they agreed to build up their grasses there. I think we need to look at that and keep this incorporated into everything that we do, and we add in some, some component for those animals, so that we can have them there working free, you know, working's calm, et cetera. I think we need to look at that and try and strategize everything we do, that we have a small component of that project if we can, so that we can support those animals, whether it's the meadow. it's domestic or wild.
Susan, then Carol.
I would be interested, Diane, if we looked into early goats on that purpose, which I think are quite effective, and I would prove of that, in fact, I would encourage that, much more than the wild animal use. Well, I mean, we can discuss it, I'm just saying, if we talk about that, the agenda item, I definitely want the goat discussion to be part of that.
Right, because it really is a proven thing, and maybe what we could do is, like say, well, is this, this species, this species, which ones can we think will work? One of the reasons why I bring up the llama, like, themselves, and deer, which are really browsers, and they're really working on those small little plants, where I have the other question, is that then it also benefits, you know, our, our recreation, our sporting, et cetera. People love to hunt, but they like to see them. And I, I understand that some of our herds are really being stressed, the animals, and that we have a reduction. You know, I'm not sure if that's what I've heard. And so I'd like us to address each species, and we are certain areas, maybe that species could go, and we're not for goats in the wilderness, okay, probably, most likely, but building the llama herds there would be ideal. So whatever we need to do, maybe to build those specific species, so just maybe discuss it, maybe have a committee that can work on this, so that every time we bring up a project, how can we incorporate that, what species we could be incorporating into that to help us with our fuels production, besides helping the animals do. I know goats work, as I have, you want to see my goats, I have goats and llamas, it's up six feet. My stuff is trained above six feet, because I use two browsing species that are very tall.
Well, my question was mostly, so the collaborative focus is on federal lands, not private lands, and so I'm assuming that for federal lands, if you wanted to put goats up there, they'd be pretty extensive NIPA in terms of sense of plan and all that stuff. And I'm, that's what.
I don't know what's.
I, I'm just thinking, this is another basic line, that way we never get.
Hold on, now, hold on, hold on.
Joseph's next.
Well, they took all the cattle out of the, so, I can't take them off, I mean, how else?
Go ahead, Joseph.
Well, before it burned up, Whiskey Town was using goats and sheep, and they, this last year, they, and there are a lot of contractors now that have herds of goats that they contract out. Whiskey Town was using a contractor from northeast Oregon with 300 goats and sheep, and they're only effective in the spring, when things are green, they don't like to dry stuff later in the summer, but they thought it was a very successful program. Well, we also have P G D with power lines going through the county that have asked the forest service to spray herbicides. And with our prior forest, forest supervisor, he told us, he told some of us that we're on the field trips, and he supported that idea, no herbicides, let's use goats. Never went anywhere that I know of, but maybe we need to renew that to our current forest supervisor, rather than give in to P G D to do it the cheapest way possible, for them to hire goats, you know, and people come with guard dogs, with herding dogs, and move their flocks around, and they, they corral them at night, and, I mean, it's, it's an industry that we could really utilize in, in this county, not just for power lines, but for a lot of places.
Brendan.
Um, as to the NIPA aspect, it would be built in, a lot of this, when you're making new projects, it would just be, could just be built into the new project, can we utilize browsing animals like goats in this, and put it into the NIPA? It wouldn't be a huge extra cost or time consumption for the NIPA.
Well, if they're only doing NIPA, sir.
We've got a debate about the issue.
We are, I know we are. Are we going to have?
There are now.
Yeah, so.
It's a great agenda.
So, just real quick, since she made, is that, is that okay? Yeah, no, again, this is about, we have an agenda item, not turning this into the agenda. Okay. So, as I hear it, it would be an agenda item to discuss, look into browsing as a fuels management prescription.
Yes.
Okay, and when you were the decision, a possibility to address a letter to Scott Fussell.
Yeah, yeah, with an action, potential action item. Okay, so all in favor of that agenda item, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Barry, you, you in it, or you don't, you, okay. So all opposed, raise your hands. Four, five, somebody's got to do that for me.
Five.
Say about a 23.
About 13. Five is 18.
Seven, four, two, ten.
That's close.
That's not 16 and 17, 10 percent. Twenty, forty.
It's like 70. You don't have the people that don't vote.
It's just people that agree. Like, by about a 20 is 20.
70 percent, roughly.
Yeah. Close, but no cigar. Okay, anything else for the agenda?
There'd be a landslide on the board.
There would be. I'm going to check ID, that's all. With that, everybody, I would like to say, thank you very much.
We had one thing back.
Coordination. That was something I asked for last. Okay. Was it on the last night?
No.
Last night, that's why we don't talk. Okay, so. I sent out a commission to the acting members. Okay. For review, so it just matters to do one act, you know, that projection. So we need to vote on it. Okay, so coordination versus cooperation.
No, no, coordination, conjunction with collaboration, it's a higher step up, so that it, the county has a, doesn't ask permission, it actually has a seat at the table for projects, et cetera. It's not asking permission, we do hear those, coordination.
At whose table?
At the forest service, BLM, federal, it's, it's in the, the, I'm sorry, Flicma, it's built into Flicma, coordination that the county government and agencies would have a, a, and he will see.
Right.
Well, you sent it out, I mean, if you didn't read it, there'd be questions, but this would be the presentation of how we work. We wouldn't vote that we would do it, first we need to understand.
A discussion, right?
Right, understand it, and then see if we'd like to ask the, the county to.
Okay, so all in favor of that agenda item, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm taking that.
They're going to be a short meeting, makes sense.
I don't know. I mean, we're going to have like, hopefully we'll have herds, if we got a bunch of cheese. So maybe we should have a discussion, maybe we should discuss a little bit better, how we think we want to be interacting with the forest, if in fact they give the bunch of cheese, marble, you know, cheese, private, private. I don't think, as facilitator, I, I don't know. The other thing about it, because we, we really did get, that process got too weird. Let's take work on February 15th, maybe hope it don't snow. Yeah, well, I can't control that. So everybody, happy holidays.